All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Boulder City Council. I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. And Elisha, if you could do a roll call, please.
Yes, sir, and good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. We'll start tonight's roll call with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Oh, that's hot.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Folkers.
Present.
Marquess.
Present.
Shuhard.
Here.
Mayor Protem Spear.
Present.
Councilmember Wallach.
Here.
M. Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our quorum.
Excellent, and also very live mics, sounding good. All right, I would like to begin by requesting a motion to amend the agenda to add item three C, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the appointments of Mayor Protem Spear and Councilmembers Adams, Marquess, and Weiner to the Council Process Improvement Working Group.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's unanimous unless, Mark, did you want to raise your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. So the agenda has been amended. All right, we're going to start next with item one A, which is a declaration honoring WK Real Estate presented by Councilmember Shuhard. If you want to kick us off, Ryan.
I have a declaration honoring WK Real Estate. WK Real Estate is a locally owned company of real estate professionals that has been in business since nineteen seventy-six. During those forty-six years, WK leadership and associates have consistently shown up as a community partner to support events and organizations that enhance the vibrancy of our city and quality of life. For twenty-four years, WK Real Estate's financial support provided the funding necessary to light up Boulder's night sky with fireworks and drones on the Fourth of July. Their staff dedicated countless hours to support the planning and logistics of this Boulder tradition, always thinking about ways that would make the event fun and inclusive. We, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado, recognize, honor, and appreciate the significant contributions to the community made by WK Real Estate.
Dan, here's your declaration. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Just want to take a moment to thank you for the recognition. It's a team effort. I have the pleasure of standing before you tonight, but it's, we have a fabulous team, and we have for forty-eight years. We're a local independent company. Being a part of the community is really important to us. It's part of our DNA. So appreciate being recognized tonight for those efforts, and we're going to carry on with a star moving forward in the future, but in different, different events that we're a part of. But thank you for the recognition. It means a lot.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for that. Our next item is one B, the Constitution Day Declaration presented by Councilmember Weiner.
Hey, I'd like to call up Tracy Sandin. Did I pronounce it the right way? Okay, great. And Angela McLean, are you going to come up? Great. Okay, I'm going to read this declaration. Constitution Day, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary for, ugh, I'm starting all over again. Yeah, okay. September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. We, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado, recognize September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Constitution Day, and ask our residents to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the constitutions had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Who would like to say a word?
Thank you very much. Mayor Brockett and City Council members and citizens of Boulder, it's my honor to accept this proclamation from the City of Boulder, celebrating the September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven signing of the United States Constitution by members of the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. My name is Tracy Sandin, Region of the Arapahoe Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, commonly known as the DAR. I am joined today by our Chapter Chair for Bells Across America, Angela McLean. You did such a great job with that proclamation. I'll skip the next little bit and just give a thank you to Megs Valer for, who helped us with this process, and thank you all so much for your support. And now I'd like to ask Angela to share an invitation.
Well, Bells Across America is an annual celebration that we started last year with Mayor Brockett. It's a celebration, as we say, of signing of the Constitution, and it happens around the United States at exactly four P. M. Eastern Time. So what we're doing is inviting people to come with bells right here in front of the City Municipal Building, and we will be ringing bells on September seventeenth at two P. M., which will be four P. M. Eastern. We'll be meeting here around one o'clock, so if you are coming, you have to bring your own bell. And I just really want to thank everybody for being here tonight, especially our mayor, our City Council, and I would love to recognize Megs, who is a great communications coordinator. Thank you, everybody, and here's your invitation.
And here's your declaration. Thank you. Thanks, Angela. Thanks so much for that, Tracy and Angela, and we'll be there with bells on. All right, it's time for open comment. Elisha, if you can go over the public participation guidelines, please.
Yes, sir, thank you, and thank you again, everyone, for joining us. I'll now go over the public participation at City Council meetings guidelines. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for a productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit our website at boldercolorado.gov/services/productive-atmospheres. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. Only one person at a time at the podium unless an accommodation like an interpreter is required. Our remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No standing in or otherwise blocking the aisles. No participant shall stand or hold items such as signs or flags in a manner that will block the view of another person. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. We ask that you not affix items to the podium or dais or walls or other surfaces of the chamber. Signs, flags, or other items used to communicate must be held by one person when being displayed. Obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally or with sounds such as applause or snapping, that is, with the exception of declarations. Traditionally, support is shown through the American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. We appreciate your presence, and again, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Elisha. All right, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I'll call three names at a time, and as your time approaches, if you can come on down towards the front. Our first three in-person speakers are Kurtine Metcalf, Len Harris, and Erin Brooks. So Kurtine?
Hi. I'm Kurtine Metcalf, about a fifty-year resident of Boulder. I've owned three homes in Boulder, all of which they couldn't give away when I purchased them. One is now worth close to a half a million, and the other two are definitely in the millions. I currently live in a low-income, mobile-home community. I was a volunteer first responder, victim advocate with the City of Boulder for twenty-six years. I have watched Boulder grow beyond its seams. My first job in Boulder back in the day paid about two dollars an hour plus tips, and the economy of Boulder was nothing like it is today. I'm here to ask you to increase the local minimum wage so those of us who hold the lowest-paid jobs can make ends meet and continue to live in our city. The current minimum wage in Boulder with tips today is eleven sixty-two, airing on the high side of two dollars an hour. Simply put, that is a nine-dollar-and-sixty-two increase in fifty years, about two cents a year. Fifty years. On top of rising costs, food, housing, utilities, medical, both my homeowner's insurance and auto insurance all but doubled, which has had a profound impact on my financial stability. Throughout my decades in Boulder, ninety, ninety-five percent of my jobs have been with locally-owned businesses, which I always choose to support. They have all made a profit and provided realistic and healthy compensation for their employees. This fair compensation is not just a matter of financial stability, but also a reflection of the employer's care. Almost done.
Well, actually, ma'am, your time is up, so.
Oh, really? Okay.
You're welcome to email us the rest of your statement.
I will. Care and respect for the employees, which they appreciate. We'd of plebeian.
Thank you so much. Now, we have Len Harris, Erin Brooks, and Alma Salamanca.
Hello, thank you so much for having me. My name is Len Harris. I'm a union organizer for the Colorado AFL-CIO. It's about a hundred and eighty unions, which approximates to about a hundred and fifty thousand workers across the state of Colorado. I actually used to live in Boulder when I first moved here in two thousand and sixteen, and I was expeditiously ousted from the community when I could no longer afford the rent within one year. So in two thousand and seventeen, I moved up to Brimfield, and it has since, this is getting quieter, and it has since, yeah, either way, I've lived there ever since. Currently, at the job that I'm at, I make thirty-five dollars an hour, which approximates to about seventy-two thousand five hundred a year before taxes, and then after taxes, it comes to forty-eight thousand dollars. As it stands currently, I cannot afford to live in Boulder. The minimum wage that we are attempting to get to is twenty-five by two thousand and thirty, ten dollars less than what I make currently within six years. Now, the longer wages stay low, the faster communities tend to erode. If workers cannot afford to stay in a community, they can't commute, they end up leaving, the businesses end up leaving as well, and it's a waterfall effect. Where I understand small and micro businesses and minority-owned businesses especially would be hypothetically impacted, a vast majority of minorities currently are disproportionately affected by low wages. As a union organizer, working with businesses is our priority. If we don't have a place of business, we don't have work. So I completely understand the difficulty businesses may go through with the wage increase, but it is not only our priority to work with them and ensure that they continue to run, but that we can raise that wage effectively so that our community can continue to thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, we have Erin Brooks, Alma Salamanca, and Laura Gonzalez.
My name is Erin Brooks, and I'm here to speak about a local issue, the Boulder-Nabloos Sister City Project. In following their Facebook page over the past few months, I've discovered that they have been consistently sharing information that raises significant concerns for the following reasons. I've seen numerous posts that present controversial news without credible sources. Some reports come from websites known for spreading propaganda, lacking author attribution and reliable verification. One is even known as a quote-unquote propaganda machine. This is troubling as it undermines the integrity and credibility of the information shared, as well as the Sister City program itself. Community members who attended at least one of their public meetings were made to feel uncomfortable, to the point of needing to leave. I was personally blocked from their Facebook page, as were others, for simply liking a comment that respectfully asked for a source on a supposed news story, a very fair request, as an entity that I believe gets at least some of its funding from, from, from all Boulder taxpayers, and I have not confirmed that, by the way, in all fairness. Is that appropriate, particularly for a city that prides itself on inclusivity for all? I understand that Ms. Adams specifically is liaison, is a liaison to this Sister City. After repeated complaints about the Nabloos program, rather than doing her job and overseeing this program, she instead proposed a review of all Sister City programs, which raises questions. Why review all programs when this concerns are specific to Nabloos? That seems like a terrible waste of taxpayer money. I'm not here to make demands, driving in or dialing remotely from Denver, as other groups have done, but as a local taxpayer, I'm here to request the City Council heed the repeated complaints and investigate this apparent misbehavior and report back to taxpayers at an upcoming meeting. Additionally, it is important that any investigation, investigation, I should say, be free from bias, particularly given Ms. Adams' documented and known positions on related issues. Thank you.
Thank you, and I've been told that Laura Gonzalez is testifying remotely, so our next three speakers are Alma Salamanca, Chris Hoffman, and Robert Smoke.
Thank you to the Boulder City Council for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Alma Salamanca, and I'm here to advocate for an increase to the minimum wage on behalf of domestic violence survivors. I believe that raising the minimum wage significantly supports D.V. survivors in many ways. For one, it will help reduce economic dependence that a survivor would have on an abusive partner. As many of us know, ninety-nine percent of survivors across the country cite finances as a main barrier to leaving an abusive situation. Additionally, this will allow survivors to increase their savings for financial emergencies, such as leaving an abusive situation, and also maintaining safe housing after they leave an abusive situation. An increase to wages will also improve access to resources such as transportation and housing. For D.V. shelters, a stay is typically about six weeks long, and it usually takes a household much longer to access housing. So an increase in wages will reduce the risk of homelessness for D.V. survivors and their children. It will also improve health outcomes for these families because it will have less of a barrier to have to pay for medical expenses and rent, food, childcare, and other costs. This will also support survivors in empowerment and stability. Higher wages can mean greater job stability and less turnover in workplaces, and it will also help improve self-confidence, self-independence, and self-determination. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Chris Hoffman, Robert Smoke, and Don Reinfeld.
Thank you for devoting your time and energy to serve on council. I am speaking on behalf of Empower Our Future, a citizens group advocating advancing a socially just, clean energy economy. In two thousand and twenty-five, the city will face a consequential decision about our energy future. As you know, the franchise agreement with Excel allows the city the unconditional right to withdraw from the franchise in January twenty, twenty-six, but to do so, Boulder must inform Excel before December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. So that the council might make an informed decision, we are urging the council to begin a community conversation about this decision right now. Some points for your consideration. Given the massive power shut-off earlier this year and concerns about sufficient fire mitigation and ever-increasing rates, there are likely some individuals and businesses who are not happy with Excel. Historically, Boulder was out of franchise with Excel for ten years, from January two thousand and eleven until January two thousand and twenty-one. During this period, Excel continued to deliver electricity and maintain its system as usual. From the start of the new franchise in two thousand and twenty-one until today, not a single kilowatt hour of renewable energy has been added to Boulder's grid as a result of the franchise. Leaving the franchise might be a good idea because it would give Boulder more flexibility in determining our energy future. As long as we are locked into a franchise, we cannot take advantage of emerging opportunities for cleaner, cheaper, more reliable electricity. Often, the advice for someone in a bad relationship is to leave it, but all of this should be discussed by the community. Given that there is a specific deadline for making this decision, we believe that the conversation should begin now.
Thank you. Now, we have Robert Smoke, Don Reinfeld, and Katrina Stroud.
My name's Rob Smoke, and I've lived in Boulder, or mostly in Boulder, for the past thirty-eight years, and I've even had the honor of chairing meetings in this chamber for the Human Relations Commission, where I served from two thousand and three to two thousand and eight. Very briefly, what I want to talk about is, well, the council passed a rule involving bringing signs to council, and, and the rule says that they have to be eleven by seventeen. You can bring no more than one, and it has to be held below the chin. And the problem I have with this is I've been to hundreds of council meetings, and never once have I heard, over the years, over decades, have I heard a council member say, hey, we've got a problem with signs here, there's too many signs, they're making it unsafe, it's emotionally unsafe, people can't see. Never heard that, but somehow, the signs all being on one topic here, freedom for Palestine, somehow that needs to be addressed. So council has done its best to make the sign issue more palatable for itself when many, many people in our community find the situation, the genocide that is occurring, that humanitarian organizations to the world over agree is occurring in Gaza, people find that completely unpalatable, and there's a huge disconnect when council is, you know, working on getting the signage right, and people desperately need to express themselves and be heard by their elected officials. Free Palestine.
Thank you. Now, we have Don Reinfeld, Katrina Stroud, and Lucy Carlson-Krakoff.
Hi, I'm Don Reinfeld, and actually, prior to this most recent speaker, I was going to say how wonderful it is to be here and have the speakers address local issues like you were elected to do. But I am here to extend my support for the interim police chief Redfern. I run an organization that works with families that have lost children to fentanyl poisoning. Many of our families have not found any justice in the deaths of their children. Last summer, I accompanied a couple that lost their college-age student to fentanyl poisoning to meet with the Boulder police chief and deputy. The death, the death of this young woman had happened before Chief Herod and interim chief Redfern were part of BPD. This couple wanted to better understand their daughter's case and share with the current police administration the ways they had felt overlooked and dismissed by the previous police administration. What we experienced in the meeting was the utmost respect and compassion from Chief Herod, Harold, I can't remember how you pronounce it, and current interim chief Redfern. Chief Redfern was kind, impatient, and open-hearted. The meeting was painful for all of us, and we had some important suggestions and criticisms and perspectives to share with the Boulder police, how to better support victims of fentanyl poisoning and deal with the trauma that families experience. We requested that each family receive a victim's advocate to be assigned to them, regardless of whether charges were filed against the dealer, or regardless of whether any crime is eventually found to be committed. The request was accepted and put into effect right away, and this may seem like a small gesture, but to families that have lost a child, it is deeply important to leave a better path for the others that come after them. it is deeply important to leave a better path for the others that come after them. And I believe he cares deeply about the community and will be an excellent police chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Katrina Stroud, Lucy Carlson-Krakoff, and Zoe Silverman.
Hello. Oh, sorry. I've never done this before. Hello, I'm here on behalf of New Era Colorado to demand the city government to raise the minimum wage to $25 per hour by 2030. I lived in Boulder for most of my life, and I'm lucky to be here. Boulder is ranked one of the best cities to raise children, has one of the best universities, and has one of the most vibrant art communities in the country. Yet its quality of life is slowly diminishing as residents are encumbered by the high cost of living. According to the CCLP, it takes an income of about $107,000 for a family of four to live in Boulder County. A single adult needs to earn $26.36 per hour. So we're already behind on tackling poverty. Boulder is ranked number 23 on most expensive city in the United States, and it shouldn't be that way. Governor Jared Polis has repeatedly failed to make housing more affordable and turned his back on our labor unions. It is therefore up to municipal governments to fight for the working class. Research has found that higher minimum wages lead to private sector and middle-class growth. Businesses thrive as it reduces job turnover costs, improve organizational efficiency, reduces worker absenteeism, and increases worker productivity. In addition, employees improving their physical health are more likely to contribute to the local economy, and their children are less likely to be neglected and experience higher educational attainment. Boulder is a beautiful city, and so let's keep it that way. Our open spaces, higher education, and our communities should not be reserved for the elite, but for everyone. It's time to raise the minimum wage before residents need to find somewhere else to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Lucy Carlson-Krakoff, Zoe Silverman, and Sarah Navidi.
Good evening, council. My name is Lucy, lifelong Boulder resident. I am speaking today in favor of increasing Boulder's minimum wage to $25 per hour by 2030, if not more. I have worked minimum wage jobs in Boulder, most notably as a barista, making minimum wage before tips, although tips sometimes increased us to higher. Often, they did not. As a former minimum wage employee, I can speak to the importance of dignity and self-sufficiency for all workers. Minimum wage workers in Boulder deserve to pay rent, buy food, and transport themselves and pay for healthcare without stress or assistance from government or nonprofits. I have a message from Johnny Jenkins, the owner of local business, The Laughing Goat, large employer in Boulder, actually, a small business. He could not attend this meeting tonight, but asked me to relay the message that as a local employer and business owner, he's in favor of this proposal. Quote from Johnny, "I just think we should do what we can to try to help people reach a level wage here, and housing costs keep going up." Johnny pays his workers much more than the current minimum wage. We have kept people waiting for a verdict on this issue. Now is the time to take action. We must include a wage escalator that keeps up with inflation in an ordinance so that workers do not have to keep coming back and back to advocate for wages that allow them to cover their basic needs as cost of living continues to go up in Boulder. Last reminder to Erin, Ryan, Taysha, and Nicole. Boulder progressives elected you. Be progressive. Thank you for considering this issue.
Thank you. Now we have Zoe Silverman, Sarah Navidi, and Carl Lappam.
Hello, I am Zoe Silverman, and I am a resident of Boulder, Colorado. I am speaking here today, asking the city council to pass a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. When discussing the previous resolution, city councilors made the point that they were unable to take a stance because it was not the place of our city council to comment on foreign policy and that we should focus on local issues instead. I struggle to see how the call for an immediate ceasefire is not a local issue. Colorado-based company Woodward is the defense contractor of bombs being dropped on innocent people and innocent children. The tax dollars of everyone in this room is being used to fund Israeli war crimes, as opposed to education or healthcare or housing. Tens of billion dollars in 2024 alone have been used to fund the Israeli military. The genocide in Gaza is a local issue as much as it is an international issue. I implore my city council to take immediate action and call for an immediate ceasefire. As a Jewish member of this community, I stand strong in the condemnation of genocide and in solidarity with the Palestinian community. Never again means never again for anyone, anywhere. A ceasefire is not a permanent solution, but it is where Boulder must start. I hope the Boulder City Council sees our direct role in this genocide and chooses to pass an immediate ceasefire resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we've got Sarah Navidi, Carl Lappam, and Connor Hall.
Good evening, council. I'm here today in support of increasing the minimum wage for Boulder County. I began residing in Boulder in 2019 when I started attending the University of Colorado Boulder, and I'm currently employed and residing in the area. Throughout this time, I have consistently been seeing the negative impacts a lack of sustainable wage has had on our community. The price of housing particularly has been forcing much of Boulder's workforce to commute to their place of employment from other cities, leading to detrimental effects on people's sense of community and identity. The 2016 Boulder County inter-county commute analysis determined that more than 50% of the low-income workers live outside of Boulder County. A 2022 Boulder Valley survey similarly determined that 66% of their employees were non-residents. Why is it that our workforce can't afford to live in the community they serve in? Can we really even call this a community at this point? The disparity between the cost of living and the minimum wage in Boulder County goes far beyond housing, however. Working as a medical assistant, it is disheartening to see how many of our patients lack the funds for imaging, lab work, and treatments they need. A large portion of these patients struggle to support their families and support their health with the wages they receive. I myself am largely struggling to support myself while trying to balance working and applying to medical school. As a community, we have the responsibility to support one another and not underestimate the human right to sustainable wage.
Thank you. Our last two in-person speakers are Carl Lappam and Connor Hall.
Hi, council members. I am here in my capacity as the Boulder organizer for New Era Colorado, as well as a young person trying to live in Boulder. And of course, as a member of the Minimum Wage Coalition, I've gotten to speak with a few of you over the last couple of weeks about this increase in the minimum wage. You've heard a lot of statistics tonight, but I would like to share with you the sheer panic that went through my mind in May when I graduated. A lot of the stress that came with graduating was a desire to stay in the community, to invest in this community, and to see Boulder become the city that we all appreciated to be. There were two things in the way of that. There were the cost of housing and the fact that I did not have a job that paid me enough to live here. I spent two years of my college working minimum wage jobs in Boulder, and I was unable to afford even half of the expenses that it costs to live here. As you know, the economic data report came out, and I'm sure that some of you have gotten the chance to read it. I have as well, and that is why I'm advocating for solution one, which would see an immediate 15% increase to the minimum wage, followed by subsequent 8% increases, finishing out with a nice low 3% wage increase. I believe that young people need relief now, and a 15% increase to the wage would do just that. It is not a situation where we can afford to wait another 10 years. That will be two more cycles of CU students, not only that, but also the rest of the young people in Boulder and the 60% of us who cannot afford to live here, but are still trying to anyways. I ask that you take this solution for the 15% increase starting in January and that you allow young people who come to school here because of the beauty of the city, because of the beauty of the Flatirons, to stay here and invest in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Connor Hall, and then our last in-person speaker is Lynn Segal.
Hi, my name is Connor Hall. I'm a member of U of CWA Local 7, working out of the deli at King Supers here in Boulder. I'm also a member of the executive board, and I'm here to speak in favor of an immediate increase to the minimum wage and ultimately, eventually, the $25 an hour and a continuing movement going forward. I don't need to remind you, you all are aware of the need for this increase. You've been aware for years. I mean, we are getting serious deja vu from last summer. I have the opportunity to now have two reports on it. I, like many others, like many of the stories you've heard, year after year after year, have been priced out of Boulder. I first came here with my mom, and my parents got divorced because we had a strong family network. You know, we were able to live with some assistance up on Shanahan Ridge when I went to Fairview because we were very close to my grandfather. As the years have gone on, none of my family lives in Boulder anymore. None of us are here anymore. And that's simply because it has become so unaffordable. Forgive me. For a community that prides itself so much on equity, justice, inclusion, this is a catastrophic failure to live up to those ideals. The very members, the people in your community who have put the most work into generating a prosperous society, prosperous community, have been most excluded from it. Sorry, guys, it's been a minute since I've done this. Very soon, we are going to build a future here in the city of Boulder that fully excludes the working class, that fully excludes the workers, that fully excludes our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last in-person speaker is Lynn Segal.
My porch lights. Nubagukans can't fix it. Okay. Wayne Seltzer says, no landfill. Electronic LED. I'm trying to be a good person here, you know? What gives? Where's Emily Freeman when you need her? She's hearing about this. They can modify this. The electronics inside don't work. Thousands of people have bought this, installed it, dumped it. From Home Depot, Nabeel will replace it. I don't want it replaced. I want it reused, the way it should be, working. This is an example of what happens with contracting in Boulder, period. But what I want to talk today about? Twins yesterday were born. The day before they were born, their dad went to pick up their birth certificate, and Israel blasted them to kingdom come. Twins, newborns, the mom and the mother-in-law. This is sick and disgusting, disgusting. $20 billion, that's not our problem. Every single sentient being on the face of the planet is Boulder's problem. Big time. CenturyLink went out this week. Whoops, we can't see you for a week. Is Boulder overpopulated? Is the world overpopulated when in a week, I can't get my internet back and I have to carry my computer everywhere with me so it can get stolen, like my computer bag got stolen from city employees in the municipal building September 14th last year? I carry my computer around with me now. You got the idea.
Thank you. All right. Our first three remote speakers are Steve Whitaker, Eric Budd, and Mary Feltinsky.
Thank you, mayor and council members. In November of 2020, Boulder voters approved a franchise agreement and partnership agreement with Excel. The partnership agreement called for the use of local projects and initiatives to reduce energy-related emissions and improve resilience and reliability. In addition, it was to address the gap between Excel's 80% carbon emissions reduction by 2030 and Boulder's 2030 goal of 100% renewable electricity serving Boulder. After nearly four years, I'm at a loss to find any amount of pollution reduction as a direct and sole consequence of the partnership agreement. The power shut off we experienced in April of this year demonstrated the poor current state of resilience and reliability of our electrical system. And I cannot find any concrete plan with implementation milestones to give us 100% renewable electricity by 2030. As a community, we need to talk about this. I am asking the council to schedule a study session and subsequent council meetings focused on the franchise agreement with Excel and what action we want to take as a community when we can opt out of the agreement next year. I am asking the city administration to schedule quarterly public sessions with residential input that focuses on city-led climate actions, the franchise agreement, partnership agreement, and the path to accomplishing the city's climate goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Eric Budd, Mary Feltinsky, and Sophie Mariam.
Hi, council. Eric Budd, I live in Boulder. I'm also speaking tonight in support of establishing a local minimum wage that's higher than the state of Colorado's. I was reading through the economic report that was published recently in the city packet, and it looks like there were a couple of decisions that you all will be making. One in particular, there was one option that would establish a minimum wage as high as at the rate of Denver. And I think it's really, it's really clear that Boulder needs a higher minimum wage, and the data absolutely supports that. And the other decision you all will make is how fast to implement this minimum wage. And I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight, just talking about the urgency, particularly with housing costs, of not only establishing this higher minimum wage, but also increasing it at a rate to get to the level of what Boulder County has established as soon as feasible for the city. And if some city councilors are worried about the effects of that, I think there are a couple really important things to keep in mind, that this higher wage is going to be an economic boost, that a lot of this money is going to go right back into the community. And also, if you're interested in city budgets, that also means higher sales tax revenues and more money for the city to spend to benefit the community. And you all will be talking about another issue tonight, which is a ballot measure that would increase the wage for city council members. And I won't go into details on that. I definitely support that measure. But one of the things that I found in researching that was the city council pay was first established in 1989 at $5,000 a year. And since that time, housing costs have increased seven and a half times since 1989. We need to raise the wage so that working-class people can afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Mary Feltinsky, Sophie Mariam, and Joan Nekel.
Hello. Thank you for letting me come and speak with you tonight. My name is Mary Feltinsky. I live in the city of Boulder, and I work with high-risk young families throughout the county. My comments tonight are my personal opinion. I wanted to address a question that city staff have addressed to you in your preparation for speaking about the minimum wage. They ask you if you should exempt unemancipated minors from the minimum wage. I ask you, please do not exempt minors from the minimum wage. Colorado has no statutory route for emancipation, so exempting unemancipated minors is essentially exempting all minors. Minors and young people are experiencing financial strain in today's economy. At work on Monday, a staff person came to me and talked about a family we thought was in a safe home with their parents. was in a safe home with their parents. It was a 16-year-old girl who is pregnant and her 17-year-old boyfriend. The family said, you guys have to start paying $900 a month in rent or we're kicking you out. So it is not uncommon for young parents to be expected to contribute to their family's support, even if they're living in their parents' homes. And this is not uncommon. Last year, 278 births were to people under the age of 24 in Boulder County. That's 12% of births are to young parents who are the people most likely to be working in minimum-wage jobs. They haven't had the opportunity to have experience and knowledge, and they definitely need the support of a living wage. And the students are not exempt. 20% to 25% of undergraduate students in the United States are parents. So even people who are trying to get those advanced degrees, they need to be able to earn a livable wage while they're in school. So please support young people and include them in all your increases in the minimum wage.
Thank you. All right. Now we have Sophie Mariam, Joan Nagel, and Laura Gonzalez.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sophie Mariam, and I am a labor policy analyst at the Colorado Fiscal Institute, or CFI. We're a statewide nonprofit that works to make Colorado a state where fiscal and tax policies promote equity and widespread economic prosperity. CFI strongly urges Boulder to raise the minimum wage by at least $25 by 2030. And I'll focus my time on some common misconceptions about existing research and data on minimum wage and respond to the recent study released by Eco Northwest, which I know some of you has, have had the opportunity to look at. The report disproportionately focuses on potential negative effects of raising the wage, with positive findings either downplayed or heavily caveated, which presents a skewed perspective that does not align with the broader body of research. For example, the report reflects a bias towards studies that reflect negative employment effects, which fails to present the bulk of modern research. For example, a recent meta-analysis of 27 studies published over 15 years found no support for the proposition that the minimum wage has an important effect on unemployment. And in fact, some recent research suggests that minimum wage increases can boost employment. The report also emphasizes potential negative outcomes on businesses when, as previous citizens have highlighted, in fact, minimum wage increases can improve labor market conditions without causing negative harmful side effects because businesses have channels of adjustment to accommodate the change, including reducing worker turnover so they save those costs, and slight consumer price increases. In fact, one 2023 study found that even for small businesses, minimum wage increases do not cause job losses, but it allows them to recruit workers and retain them more easily, reduce turnover, and they kind of account for it through a small price increase that is, is not harmful for consumers. The report also failed to account for the fact that the minimum wage increase in Denver led to an increase in sales tax revenue and a boost in the local economy. I'll conclude that poverty is a policy.
So your, your time is up, but feel free to email the rest of your comments. Thank you. Our last two speakers are Joan Nagel and Laura Gonzalez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Joan Nagel. I've been a resident of Boulder for 50 years. To the council, I predate not to consider national issues. I want to yield the rest of my time back to the councils. You can handle local issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Laura Gonzalez.
I couldn't understand her. Could you have her do it again?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello. I've been a resident longer than City Councilmember Tara Weiner, and I remind you all that I am not a settler. I am here to demand that you stop all your EDI performance, which is a local issue, because it is very offensive. How dare you say today, love, rights will never be regained, yet you remove more rights from the city council rules because of your white discomfort and fragility? Oh, yeah, I forgot. You only care about rules when it applies to white people, not for those of people of color who are oppressed. And let's be real, this was not a problem with the Zionist settlers or the public commenters as a majority carrying big flags and posters. So please, stop doing a land acknowledgement, Holocaust remember states, so you don't care about the current genocides in Palestine, Congo, and Sudan. And I bet you never heard about the silent Holocaust. It's highly insulting that you are sending 1.6 million of our hard-working tax dollars annually to bomb innocent children, about 50,000 right now. And guess what? When we do white phosphorus, it does impact us here locally. To folkers, thank you for standing loud and clear and aiming that your colleagues prioritize the core over engaging the most oppressed voices in our community. I appreciate you. All of those voices that voted to pass the oppressor, racial, silence, black, brown, and queer voices, you are the living proof of what MLK warned us about. We do not need more allies, and we're devoted to order than to justice. So please, stop performing your allyship. I am also here to demand another local issue. Please eliminate our sister-city relationship with Ramar Haneges. This program is claiming nonprofit status. Does not only do they not pay taxes to our state, which we should benefit from, but you allow donations to go to commit the crime of apartheid. Also, Detay Man, the prison, or let's call it concentration camp, is less than 40 miles away from that sister city. It's like going from here to Littleton. One, this prison is sustaining Palestinians for months without a charge and under torture and rape condition. There was a mass rape where they murdered one person with our tax dollars and with the donations where they don't pay taxes that go into the sister city. Two, this city is committing international crime of apartheid.
Your time is up, but you're welcome to email us the rest of your comments. All right, that brings us to the end of our open comment period. I'd like to thank people who, who came out to speak to us, whether in person or virtual. And I will turn to city staff to see if there are any responses.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf, filling in big shoes for Nurya this evening at a conference. Just appreciate everybody coming out to speak this evening. Just a couple notes. We have minimum wage scheduled next week, so looking forward to a hefty conversation and a hefty packet for those following along. So appreciate those that came to speak about minimum wage. We're looking forward to that discussion. And then a couple speakers referenced our sister, sister-city program. Just want to clarify that there is no direct city support, direct city dollars of our sister-city committees, so just wanted to make that clarification. And that's it.
Thanks for that, Mark. Teresa?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Thanks. Council, any comments? Follow-up? You got one? Okay, Taysha?
All right. Thank you so much for all of those who came and spoke today. I also want to thank our community member who brought up the issues that we have been hearing about regarding our novice sister city. As the representative, I have been reaching out since I became the representative. And I'm not surprised that we haven't heard back from them. As some of you may know, they are still facing settlers illegally trying to take their land. That is happening right now. In addition to many of their family, their community members who are dead because of what we are seeing and what we are funding. And so I am grateful to our city staff for continuing to help me in reaching out, even though that is outside of the scope of their work and outside of what we do for sister cities, which is why I was actually asking for an evaluation, so that it's not some pet project by those city council members who want to do something. And I, I commend those of you who are taking your sister-city's work and, and going above and beyond and, and really doing what that work is meant to do, which is to foster international relations and affairs. And as somebody who has a degree in international education with a focus on international affairs and United Nations in particular, I have been disheartened by what I've seen. And so know that we have reached out, that, that I did ask for a, not an evaluation, but an update on the program, so that as we are updating our tenure plan and other things related to our city, we can think about ways, do we want to integrate this program to something more meaningful? There are rich opportunities. We have the Deschambert House because of this relationship. And so, again, recognizing that this one issue, and, and anybody who knows me knows I say this all the time, is one leaf on a forest of things that we have to address as a community. So know that that is why I asked about that. And I'm hopeful that our council members, our, my fellow council members and staff can have a more robust conversation and community about our sister cities program and what we want to do with it. In addition, I wanted to, again, lift up my voice in support of our council being able to not only discuss international issues, but also for an immediate ceasefire. Every day, I meet with a variety of stakeholders at the federal, state, and local levels on issues related to environment, conservation, and education. Every single one of them talks about how they don't have money to do the work that they need to do, and to see our military receive another 20 million, billion with a B dollars. And I did some rough math, so let me just take the time to share some rough math. So 220 billion dollars divided by 200, by 345,653,953, which is the US population right now, as of 2024, is $57.86 a person. You multiply that by roughly 102,000, and that's $5.9 million just for the city of Boulder, just for the 20 million. And so I will say again that this is a local issue when we are at a problem with our finances. However, I do not have the majority of my fellow council members in the nine out of five needed in order to have us discuss international issues. I respect the decision of my fellow members, right? Because there's other things that we need to talk about as a community that we do agree on, that we are all full steam ahead on. And so, you can, but not while I'm talking. And so, no, I'm not canceling anybody. I'm Taisha-ing. But what I am saying is, community, I do hear you, we do hear you. We may have a difference of agreement on what our city role is on this, but again, our elections are coming up in 2026. You want to see something different? Vote for something different. But know that everybody that I get an opportunity to work with, I value their opinion, I value their thoughts, and they have made our city better in a variety of different ways. And I need you to see that, too. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve. I know we all don't agree. You all are welcome to say something, but it is our silence that allows them to add on whatever their thoughts are on what we think. And so if you don't want to talk about it in a nine out of five, then I can take my liberty to respond to public comment. And that is what I did today. And I did it with all respect for the decisions that you make, and I cannot wait to continue to do the rough work that we do together. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. I got Nicole queued up, and does anybody else want to go after that?
I just want to say thank you, Taysha, first of all, for your work with, just trying to reach out to our sister city. I, I do appreciate that you're doing that. I think I also value your suggestion of looking at the sister city project. My sister city, Monte, I have not once been able to connect with them because of the struggles that they're having in their community. And I, I just, I think it is, it is worth looking at in general, but it's not like we have an abundance of issues that we don't have time to, to get to. But I also just wanted to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight, and thank especially the workers who took time out of their days to come and be heard. I know that all of our time is money, and yours is especially money. And so thank you for the value that you brought in sharing your opinions with us tonight.
All right. I don't see any other hands. Did you want to go?
Point of order about long lectures. I'm just bringing that up, that I'm pretty sure that in our book, that we should not have to listen to, once something is litigated, a long speech after that.
Do we have any rules around how off, how, what constitutes a lecture? And do we have, can I have somebody let me know how long I spoke for that amount of time? And if there are any issues around that, I'm more than happy to do an investigation of how long others have spoke, so that we can decide what the average speaking time is for a council response. I'm looking at you because you clerk, you know, I know you got a lot, you got the data. So I look at the people, got the data. Okay? And so that's my point of order on that. Thank you so much.
Great. And I'll, I'll say that I don't believe we have a definition of lecture. We do have some language about relitigation. Teresa, do you, I don't know if you have that handy?
I'm afraid I don't have the citation handy, but it does require a material change of facts or law to revisit a subject that we've already, that the council has already decided.
Yes.
The issues that I rose, that I raised were actually new issues, and so actually I'm still actually in, in, not in, in violation of our code. So, thank you.
If we maybe can move on, or, no, Mark, go ahead. And I got Lauren, too.
Okay, just very quickly, I, I do not think we were raising new issues today. I, and I believe we have made this decision. We did it fairly decisively, and I think that decision ought to be honored, not in the breach, but in the substance. And I would appreciate it if, if all of my colleagues did that going forward. That doesn't mean you have to agree with, with what was done. Many do not, many in the audience do not, and that's fine. But that's a decision we have made, and it's not productive for us to continue to relitigate it on a weekly basis. Thank you.
Thanks. I got Lauren.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone, community members, for coming out to speak today. And I, in what I heard from Taysha was not an attempt to relitigate something, but a point of view and an addressing of comments that had come up. Seems to me like relitigation would be to ask us to vote on this again, and that is not what I heard a request for. I do appreciate the idea of reviewing the sister cities and would be in support of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I think we can move on from open comment. Thanks again to the folks who came out and spoke. If we can go to consent agenda, please, Elisha.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Quiet in the room, please.
Our consent agenda is item number three on tonight's agenda, and it consists of items 3A through 3C.
Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Or perhaps a motion?
Make a motion to pass our consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call, please, Elisha?
Yes, sir. We'll start the roll call on consent agenda items 3A through 3C with Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Brockett?
Yes.
Councilmember Foltz?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Chuhar?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach?
Yes.
And Weiner.
Yes.
The consent agenda is hereby passed unanimously.
Thank you. Can you go to our call-up check-in, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our call-up check-in is actually item number four on tonight's agenda. For A is the concept plan review and comment request on a partial redevelopment of the 1.877-acre developed property at 2717 Glenwood Drive. The existing 37-unit, two-story walk-up L-shaped apartment building would remain, and a proposed three-story, 22-unit multifamily building would be constructed over a portion of the existing parking lot. Two stories of residential over-parking. Proposed unit types include efficiency living units, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. This is reviewed under case number LUR 20240012.
Thanks. Any questions or comments or desire to call the? Thanks. Any questions or comments or desire to call this one up? Tina?
Yeah, I'm not looking to call it up, but I do have a question. There are some really good comments from the planning board in this particular development. And I'm wondering how we're keeping a log of those kinds of comments so that when we move to less or to more administrative review rather than the review process that we have under HP 241313, that we can capture some of that thoughtfulness. Is there, do we have a system for that?
Well, we've got Planning Director Brad Mueller in the room to come address that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Brad Mueller, Planning Director. Thanks for that question. And we do attempt to capture that in the notes and staff report. We do keep very close notes about what the planning board does say about a particular item. It gets incorporated really in the follow-up discussion, too, in a real practical, actionable way with the applicants. We are constantly trying to find what the right balance of capturing that in minutes without, you know, creating a duplication of the recorded record. But we do make a point to do that.
And can I ask another question then? Just, and I'm a little bit newer to some of the review process. Could you talk about the maximum efficiency unit number that I noticed in the development plan? It said that it was at the 40% maximum.
I cannot, but we do have Shannon Muller online who can speak to that, who's the case.
I'm just not familiar with that particular.
Shannon, do you want to respond to that?
Yes. Hi, good evening, council. My name is Shannon Muller. I'm with the City Planning and Development Services Department. Yes, I believe in our code, there is a stipulation just regarding the percentage of units that can be efficiency living units on a property. And so I think that was just a reference to that percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Shannon and Brad. Lauren?
Like Tina, I really appreciated some of the comments that Planning Board brought up. And I was hoping someone could remind me, if we wanted Design Advisory Board to look at this before it comes back to Planning Board or council, would we have to call it up? Or can we just request that, sorry, yeah, the Design Advisory Board take a look at it?
We do not need to call it up. We would just need a motion to do so.
In that case, I would like to make a motion to have Design Advisory Board weigh in on this project before it comes back to Planning Board or to this council.
Second.
The second went to Nicole. I'll just call for a vote. This is a show of hands. All in favor of sending this.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Does this add time to the process?
It does.
And how much time?
Brad, do you know about how much time would add?
I would expect it's fairly minimum. Shannon, maybe you've got a more precise time. I'm thinking maybe, you know, a couple of weeks at the most.
That's about right. We can usually process that just during the review process, kind of while it's in the staff review. Have a go to DAB during that time.
Okay. Yes, Ryan?
I think I'm ready to vote for it, but do we have any direction for Design Board? What instructions do we have for them, if any?
I thought Planning Board's requests made sense. For me, it's mostly about the human scale of the building and either massing or material choices to make it more human scaled.
And I'll piggyback on that if you don't mind, Lauren, just that I thought the project was really creative, the way it put the new building in the parking lot and preserved the older buildings. But I think it does present some design challenges. And so I'd be very interested in hearing the Design Advisory Board's comments. I think it'd be valuable for the project in that area, that kind of combination of the old and the new. Yes, Tina?
And I just, again, I'm thinking about how we're going to look at the new bill, 1313, and this wouldn't be able to necessarily be part of that process. So we need to think about how we come up with a review without these extra steps, I think.
We can flag that for consideration for later on. Great. All right, I'll go ahead and call the vote. Raise your hand if you agree on sending it to DAB. All right, so unanimous vote, so we'll be referring that to DAB. Lauren, any other comments?
Oh, just that I really appreciate the idea of having the additional housing on top of the parking lot. I otherwise am very excited about this project. Thank you.
Well said. And I'm not seeing anybody else's hands. I'll just call on myself just to triple down on the Planning Board comments being excellent, that I think this project's going in the right direction, but also needs a little tweaking to get to that livability and human scale. So looking forward to seeing it come back. Not seeing any other hands on this one. Didn't see any interest in calling it up, but we did do the referral to DAB. All right, let's go to our first public hearing, please.
Thank you, sir. This is rather lengthy, so I appreciate everyone's patience. Our public hearings are item number five on tonight's agenda, and it is the consideration of the following ordinance related to the 2024 Special Municipal Coordinated Election. First ordinance is, on second reading, it is 8639, amending Section 130 of the Boulder Home Charter, and it is related to boards and commissions. Second ordinance, also on second reading, ordinance 8640, which is amending Section 7 of the Charter, and it is related to council compensation. Ordinance number three is the second reading as well for ordinance 8641, amending Section 9 of the Charter to allow executive sessions. Next, we have ordinance number four, which is the petitioner's ordinances. And for A is the second reading of ordinance 8638, which is related to decommissioning the airport, commonly known as repurpose our runways. For B is the second reading of ordinance 8643, which is also, again, a petitioner's ordinance, and it is related to runways to neighborhoods. Next, we have our alternate ordinances. For C is ordinance 8647. It is on first reading and a public hearing, and it is related to repurpose our runways. And for D is also introduced, ordinance 8648, related to runways to neighborhoods.
That was a mouthful. Thanks, Elisha. And just to lay out our process here, we're going to have a presentation by city staff on all of these ordinances, followed by council questions. Then we'll go to the public hearing and then come back for deliberation. So, Mark, if I can pass it over to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just short comments for me on this one. Just appreciate all the work that has gone behind the scenes to get here, both from the petitioner's community and staff. I'll just recognize that we also have Deputy City Manager Chris Meszek online tonight. He has been gracious enough to join us from the East Coast, so getting later over there. But he's been a part of conversations with the petitioners. So if you do have any additional questions on that, he is available. Otherwise, we have Deputy City Attorney tonight, Aaron Poe, that will walk through the ordinances as mentioned and some discussion on process to help guide this evening.
All right. Thank you for the introduction. Aaron Poe, good evening, Mayor and members of council. And I'm here tonight with our 2024 potential ballot measures. Tonight, we have ballot measures for council consideration. We have three charter revisions brought forward from the June 20th council discussion. These are council-referred measures. They are council compensation, executive sessions, and changes to advisory boards and commissions. We also have four measures regarding the Boulder Municipal Airport. Two are citizen-initiated measures, repurpose our runways and runways to neighborhoods. And two alternate versions negotiated between the petition committee and the city manager's office. First, we have council compensation, which is ordinance 8640. This would amend Charter Section 7 to increase council compensation and move to an annual AMI calculation to reflect the increased quantity and complexity of council work. Changes made based on council feedback from June 20th are that the mayor would receive 50% of the AMI and other council members 40%. And it would take effect upon the swearing-in date in December 2026. Next, we have executive sessions, ordinance 8641. This would amend Charter Section 9 and add a new Charter Section 21A for executive sessions as allowed by state law for reasons such as receiving legal advice and discussing negotiation strategy. The change made based on council feedback from June 20th is that this would take effect January 1, 2025. All right, and our last charter issue is changes to advisory boards and commissions, which is ordinance 8639. This would amend Charter Section 130 to allow council to vary the terms, eligibility, and meeting schedule by ordinance for boards that do not have enabling charter sections and update the removal language. Changes made based on council feedback from June 20th are that it would take effect January 1, 2025, and the prior first sentence in subsection D, which read "all board and commission members serve at the pleasure of council," has been removed. Our next steps on charter measures would be to adopt on continued second reading September 5, or this would be a third reading if changes are made tonight. The goal is to have the same go-dark period as the airport measures. And the go-dark period starts on the date that a ballot title is fixed by council and after which city resources cannot be used to fund express advocacy. All right, and as we move into our airport measures, there are two definitions that I want to explain. The first is the term citizen-initiated petitions. This is ordinance 8638, repurpose our runways, and ordinance 8643, runways to neighborhoods. Normally, we avoid the term citizen because it's not welcoming to all members of the community. However, I am using it tonight as a commonly-used legal term of art because a person must be a registered voter and therefore a citizen to legally bring a petition measure. The airport conversation is a contentious item, and I want to ensure that our record uses terms that will be understood by anyone who looks at it in the future. The second definition is alternate measures, which means ordinance 8647, the alternate, repurpose our runways, and 8648, alternate runways to neighborhoods. These have language negotiated between the petitioner committee and the city manager's office. If adopted, these would become council-initiated ballot measures. Okay, for the citizen-initiated measures, repurpose our runways, this would adopt a new Section 11-4-8, decommissioning the airport in the Boulder revised code. This new ordinance would decommission the airport except for emergency helicopters. It would prohibit acceptance of state or federal funding with obligations that would delay decommissioning and guide site activities prior to decommissioning. The second repurpose, I'm sorry, the second runways to neighborhoods would take effect only if repurpose our runways also passes, and it would adopt subsection 11-4-8E that would repurpose the airport as sustainable mixed-use neighborhoods with at least 50% of onsite housing units designated as permanently affordable for low, moderate, and middle-income residents and require input from a community board for redevelopment. All right, for the alternate measures, these have the same goals as the citizen-initiated measures, but with revised language. The alternate, repurpose our runways. The language is more land use oriented and less administrative. It has a requirement to the extent feasible to negotiate or litigate to end existing grant commitments to the FAA and acknowledges that future amendments or repeal may occur via a vote of the people if decommissioning is not feasible. All right, and the alternate runways to neighborhoods, the language, again, is more land use oriented and less administrative. It changes specific terminology. Area plan becomes vision, community board to working group. And the requirement of at least 50% affordable housing is changed to a fundamental desired outcome. A new subsection is added with an intent statement explaining that the intent is to repurpose the site to serve housing needs as identified at the time of redevelopment and states that changes in future community needs can be addressed by another ballot measure. So this slide is a general overview of options with petition initiatives. One, council may adopt the language as an ordinance in lieu of placing it on the ballot. In this circumstance, council could pass 11-4-8 as an emergency ordinance, and no measures would go to the ballot. The second option would be to submit the citizen initiatives to the voters. Third, council may pass the negotiated alternate measures to the ballot. Petitioners would withdraw their initiatives, and the alternate measures become a council-referred ballot measure going to the voters. And last, council could place a competing measure on the ballot. So tonight is a decision point. Does council want to act affirmatively to decommission the airport and set housing requirements? If yes, there are options. Council may place the alternate measures on the ballot. They become ballot items brought forward by council, and the petition committee would withdraw the citizen-initiated petitions. Or, on September 5, council would pass the alternate language as an emergency ordinance with petitioner commitment to withdraw the petitions. Or council could pass the original petitioner language. This would eliminate the need for ballot items. If no, council would pass forward both citizen-initiated measures at continued second reading on September 5 for voter consideration, and the alternate measures would not need to pass on first reading tonight. So the September 5 meeting is currently scheduled for second reading of the alternate measures, continued second reading of the charter measures, and citizen-initiated measures. This would also be a third reading if there are changes brought tonight to the alternate measure or to charter items. It could also be used to adopt 11-4-8 as an emergency ordinance. September 5 will start the go-dark period for all items on the same date. And we do have a firm deadline. Ballot titles must be submitted to the county clerk by noon on September 6, 2024. Any not submitted will not appear on the voter's ballot. Thank you. This concludes the slideshow, and staff is ready to answer any questions.
Thanks so much for that, Erin. I think the image of the scared dog really speaks for all of us.
It does.
Great. So clarifying questions for city staff. Tina?
Yeah, I have a question about whether there's any time that we historically or need to right now submit an airport plan to the FAA. Is that something we have to do at a specific time, or is that something we do at our pleasure?
That's a good question. I think I'm going to turn to our short timer, Natalie Stifler, coming up.
Natalie Stifler, come on down.
It's only been two days.
Your mic's not on.
Good evening, council. Natalie Stifler, Director of Transportation Mobility. We, it's at our leisure. We don't have any plans to update our master plan or the ALP right now. That would be something that we could do in the future, but we don't have any plans to do that.
Glad to get you up here one more time, Natalie, before you're done with us. Any other clarifying questions? Matt?
Yeah, so my clarifying question has to do with Slide 12, in kind of with regards to the options. It says sort of if no. I think there's more agnosticism with that one, perhaps? Because it doesn't necessarily, if we choose to put the citizen initiative of, it doesn't, it's not our decision to vote to not decommission or to decommission. It's agnostic. We're not making a decision at all. We're just referring the original measure to the ballot. Is that correct? Because I didn't want to see that these were binary. Because I didn't want to see that these were binary by decision. It was, we're actually stepping out of the decision-making process entirely by not referring it to the ballot. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's a fair characterization.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
If we use the alternative language just to provide more clarity or whatever the benefits we deem that language to have, that doesn't necessarily imply an endorsement of decommissioning, does it?
If you were to put forward the the alternate measures, it would not necessarily put a thumb on the scale one way or the other.
Okay, so something is going to be on the ballot unless we put on our own competing ordinance. But if we're choosing between one or two, we have the flexibility to do the one that has what we think is superior language without necessarily saying that, you know, we're putting our thumb on the scale.
I think that's accurate.
Okay. Do you mind if I follow up on that, Mark? I guess Teresa, but there would be a distinction in that it would no longer be a citizen-initiated ballot measure. It would be a council-initiated ballot measure. So that's a distinction, right?
Absolutely, that's right.
Right, so it doesn't necessarily put our thumb on the scale, but there's something of a difference there.
There is.
Can I, can I call a quick?
You're the third, Matt. I got, I got Taysha and Tina here first, and then I'll get to you. Taysha, do you want to go ahead?
Oh, I didn't know I was in. I just came in at the end.
I saw you first, but.
All right. So on this thumb on the thing, though, when you say not material, changing the language from 50% though to whatever's not specific, that seems like it would be substantive to me. Am I missing something?
I agree that that's a substantive change.
Thank you.
Yeah, and could you explain anything else that changes if it's council-initiative initiated rather than citizen-initiated? Is that right?
I'm going to decline to give you legal advice.
You are?
But I would remind you that you did receive a confidential memo that outlined some distinctions that would be legally important.
Matt?
If we were to refer this measure to the ballot, wouldn't we be in a position by sidestepping and or skipping quite a bit of our regular land use discretionary process because it is thus predefined in the ordinance? And so would it be a way to characterize that by doing so we would be usurping the very process that we rely on to dictate land use in our community?
I'm going to decline to to characterize it as usurping or not, but I, what I would say is that it is uncommon to see legislation that that proactively says how the council must zone a particular area of land. That is unusual.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, in the modified alternate measures, the petitioners were involved in that, right? They kind of talked through it with us and agreed to the changes that we see here. Is that correct?
That's right. This council instructed the city manager's office to work with the petitioners to negotiate some language. This is the language that was arrived upon that both parties could agree upon. I don't think it represents everything that either side wanted as most negotiations turn out.
Right, yeah, and that, I just wanted to make sure. There were things that they wanted. There were things that we wanted that did not appear in here.
That's accurate.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So Taysha, did you have another question?
I did have a question, and it was about, so you said, I'm trying to catch it before it's gone. Yeah, it's all right, I'll get it, I'll come back in comments. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move to the public hearing. We've already heard our public participation guidelines earlier in the evening. So we've got, so our first speaker is Laura Kaplan, who is pooling with Ann Wilson and Philip Ogrin. Are you all in the house? There you are. So Laura, you'll get five minutes, and then after that, we'll go to Robert Crifosi and Aiden Reed.
Thank you, and I won't take five minutes, but it's nice not to have to rush. So good evening, members of council. I apologize, I'm having some vocal issues, so I might cough or sound a little choked, but it's not serious. I promise I won't die. So good evening, Laura Kaplan here in my personal capacity and representing the Airport Neighborhood Campaign. It's nice to see you all on this beautiful summer night. It's 82 days before the election, and you are doing some very important work here with all of the ballot measures that are in front of you. So as you know, Airport Neighborhood Campaign successfully petitioned to put our two measures on this fall's ballot, and they are called Repurpose Our Runways and Runways to Neighborhoods. Your choice tonight is whether to accept and put forward an alternate version of these measures that staff worked on collaboratively with the ANC, or to see the original petition language move forward to the ballot. As a side note, I want to mention that we, the ANC, did not call out our supporters tonight to come and testify en masse. We figured that that wasn't necessary. We stand on the strength of the 3,400-plus signatures that we gathered to put these on the ballot, and we figured we don't need to draw out the evening and that you would rather get to work. So regarding the two versions in front of you, first, I'd like to talk about the original petition language. As is customary, the ANC worked with the city attorney's office on this original petition language to ensure that it was appropriate for city code and could be implemented. This draft was provided to staff for comment before it was accepted for petitioning, before we gathered a single signature. And we were and we still are happy with that original petition language. However, that happened back in March of this year, and with time and perspective and additional conversations, sometimes a good thing can be further improved. So now I'd like to talk about the alternate measures. We at the ANC would like to thank staff, especially Nurya and Chris Meschuk, who's online, for their diligent work to collect ideas from council and staff for refining our ballot measures. Chris and Nurya worked with us in a truly collaborative, interest-based fashion to find tweaks to the language, and in particular those that would make the ballot measure smoother for the city to implement and to administer should the ballot measures pass. We think that staff did a great job of describing the changes and the reasons for those changes in the memo for tonight and in Erin's presentation. So we are happy to support the alternate versions if that is the will of council. We do think that the alternate versions honor the suggestions of council and staff. They reflect that hard work of staff, and they stay true to the original vision and intent that found favor with our thousands of petition signers. We worked hard to be good partners in the collaborative process, and we very much appreciate that staff did the same. We are also ready to hear and work with you on any additional changes that you, the city council members, would like to propose tonight for that alternate language. And finally, I was a little bit surprised to see that slide that said that if you accept the alternate measures, that that somehow indicates that you support decommissioning. And I think that your conversation helped clear up a little bit that it does not seem like that's the case. We certainly do not take your decision, whichever ones you move forward to the ballot, to indicate support or non-support for closure. We will not try to spin it that way. You have our word. You know, the decision tonight is just which version of these ballot measures you think would be better for the city of Boulder if they were to pass. And so thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions that come up in discussion if that is appropriate.
Thank you, Laura. All right, now we have Robert Crifosi, Aiden Reed, and Lynn Segal, each of whom will get three minutes. Is Robert in the room? Not seeing him. All right, Aiden, you're up.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I had signed up to talk about council pay. Is this still when I should speak? Okay. So good evening. My name is Aiden. My pronouns are he/him. I'm a Boulder resident, and I'm here to speak this evening in favor of the proposed ballot initiative to increase council pay. I think increasing council salary is a good idea as it could potentially enable more working-class people to run for and win public office, which could yield public policies more reflective of the electorate across an array of policy areas, including housing, education, health care, and climate. However, if council is going to increase its pay, I think it should do the same for the city's minimum wage workers. How can a working-class person hope to run for public office and serve on council if they cannot afford to live in and work in Boulder? Do we want more inclusive, equitable policy outcomes or not? Council members work hard and should be able to serve without making poverty wages or rely on a spouse or partner's salary. If we want a future city council that is truly reflective of the Boulder community, we must first make it possible for working-class people to live and work here before they run for all of us. Also, not for nothing, the death toll in Gaza today surpassed 40K, which is surely an undercount. Of those dead, at least 16,456 are children and 11,000 are women. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last in-person speaker is Lynn Segal, and then we have one remote speaker.
This is premature, premature. First, we should know if we have an obligation to the FAA for perpetuity. No, I lost $34,000 because the mail was sent to the wrong address for my retirement fund. I can't sue the post office. They returned the mail finally, 22 years after I moved. Four years is what I lost as a result of not knowing that I had the retirement account, you know? The FAA, city of Boulder is going to sue the FAA? Teresa, hello? I don't think so. You know, there's some things in our government you just can't do. We've spent all this money, all this investigation, all this time, all these resources in an inflationary bend, and you heard the people tonight, no one can afford to live here. We aren't balancing jobs, housing. You know, what are you spending money on for? Housing is never going to be cheap in Boulder, no matter if you put housing everywhere, up to the top of the flat earths. People are still going to come here. It really doesn't matter. So I don't support the change of the airport. Granted, my dad worked for the FAA in DC, and I won't fly because I was thrown off the airplane for not wanting to watch the TV because I don't watch TV. And you know how stewardesses are, they're overworked and overstressed, and, you know, I don't blame them. But I support the airport being there. And even if the airport isn't there, and that's the thing with John Tayer, the fact that he supports housing there, if it passes, that is revolting. That's as revolting as Gaza, you know? I was surprised that he didn't, you know, that he supports the airport staying there. But then that completely, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too. John's very confused, and he's running the Chamber of Commerce of our city. This is a problem. And like I said, this is premature. Why have we spent all this money? Mark, why have we spent all this money? On what? A fool's run for this whole thing when the FAA is not going to, you know, allow this thing anyway? And meantime, have we lost any money in the grants, not accepting the grants? Because that's our money.
Lynn, your time is up. But thank you for your comments. Okay, we have one virtual speaker who's kafta fafa. Are they present online?
Thank you, the CDH are not online tonight.
Sorry, couldn't quite understand that.
Thank you, the kafta are not online tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, so they're not present. So that brings us to the close of the public hearing. Thanks, folks, for coming out and speaking to us. So we come back to council for a discussion. Taysha, did you remember your question?
Yes. Well, it was kind of answered, but I guess I would like to.
Sure, go ahead.
So I was curious if or what percentage of the signers were consulted in any of the updates to the negotiated changes.
So typically, we would work with the petition committee rather than, rather than each individual signator. And so here, I believe that Laura served as the representative of the petition committee.
Right, so that was my question to, to her and the other representatives is how and in what ways were the signers involved in the adjustments to, that were made to the petition?
So you do have the right to ask to Laura to come up and answer the question. Would you like to ask her to come up?
Yeah, do you mind? Or, and if there are the other represent, I mean, I think you're representing both of them. So my specific question is, in what ways were the signers engaged in the updates to the, to the language? And if they were engaged, what percentage would you say were engaged?
Good evening, Councilmember Adams. Thank you for your question. So when we went out and petitioned, we were gathering signatures from people who were strangers to us, but we talked with them. They read our petitions and they signed it. We did not gather their contact information, so that's not part of the process. But as part of the ANC, we do have a core team that has multiple members, so there are about 10 people, I would say, that were involved in reviewing this language.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I've got two key issues identified. Of course, one of them is which set of ballot measures we should move forward regarding the airport. And then the other one is Tina had sent in some suggested language changes to the boards and commissions ordinance. Does anybody else have any topics that they want us to consider as part of our discussion? Mark?
Well, just an administrative thing. In a hotline, I proposed some additional language changes, and I'm going to withdraw that just to keep this simple.
Okay.
Until we choose between the work product provided by staff and the committee and the original language. So we do not have to go through the histrionics of discussing my language changes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, so, so those are, seeing no hands, those are the two major issues I got for our discussion. So why don't we dive right into the question of the airport ballot measures? So we have in front of us a decision of whether to pass along ordinances 8638 and 8643, which were, have the original language that was signed by the petitioners, or the alternates of 8647 and 8648 with the negotiated updated language. Does somebody want to kick us off with the which direction we should go here? Yep, I got Mark. Matt?
I can live with either, but I'm going to support the amended language for the following reasons. First, this is what we tasked staff to do. They are only, they've only had these conversations, and they have only come up with these alternates at our request. And I'm loath to simply toss that aside. And I, on a substantive level, I think the alternate language is superior in a couple of ways. And having established that neither the citizen-initiated language or the alternate language as provided by staff in consultation with the committee represents a formal decision by this council on decommissioning, I would rather go with better language than worse, especially since it is the language that we have asked them to provide.
Got it, thanks. Matt?
Yeah, I'm going to advocate that we just let the original petition go to the ballot and for these reasons. You know, Laura brought up, I think, very well that, you know, this committee stands by the strength of the 3,400 people that signed the petition, and I think it's vital that we respect that and let them see the ordinance on the ballot as they signed. I think that's one of the critical things in direct democracy that we allow. You know, it's really interesting that if we take this ballot measure and put it on, we are endorsing it because most of the petitions the council has referred to the ballot pass. we are endorsing it because most of the petitions, the council has referred to the ballot pass. And they pass because they think of us as a deliberative body, that when we put something on, we mean it, and it's thoughtful by that majority. So it may not be a tacit endorsement, but it effectively and de facto is. And I think that's problematic because of the fact, as we discussed in the questions, this lacks our land use process that we've come to appreciate. And we have worked so hard over the years to build our Community Connectors program, our racial equity instrument that informs our land use. And we would be abdicating intentionally that land use decision to the voters without that deliberate process that we rely on so heavily for community to inform us what to do with our spaces. And I think there's, you know, more problems with referring it to the ballot, that this council would be okay with this ballot measure passing if we refer it for the simple reason of environmental justice. We would be saying it's okay to put 50% affordable housing on a contaminated site. All of the work that we've done in environmental justice says very clearly, environmental justice essentially means that everyone, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, has the right to the same environmental protections and benefits, as well as meaningful involvement in the policies that shape their communities. But rarely has this been the reality for people of color and those with low incomes. That's critical because it is meaningful involvement of these policies that shape their communities. And yet, we would set up a process that would bypass our Community Connectors and use of our racial equity instrument, and deliberately put our lowest-income people, perhaps families and people of color, on a knowingly contaminated site. If the voters want to take that, they're willing to do so, and I'm okay with that. But it is, I am not okay with this council saying that we're okay putting it on the ballot. We have a deliberate process that we should follow. So I'm not saying close or no close, I'm just saying we have a process and we should follow that and follow it well. So I think that's really something to be very clear on. And so I really hope this diocese takes its core responsibility, not to its ideology or foregone conclusion, but to the oath to protect this city and therefore those that are most vulnerable. And I think we can do so in a deliberate manner with the processes we've set in place, adopting the alternative language bypasses that core work. And I think we let the language stand as was passed by the petitioners.
May I colloquy for a second?
Sure, quick colloquy.
Just a question, are you suggesting that housing would actually be built on this site without any adequate remediation of whatever environmental conditions exist, which we do not know that they do, and we do not know that the cost of correcting them? But are you suggesting that we would actually build housing there without addressing that issue?
I'm not the one suggesting it, the petitioners are. So my point is, very clearly, you can, there's a reason why Santa Monica Airport deliberately passed their rule not to build housing. The residents of Santa Monica said, "We want this to be a park." One of the main reasons for that is they too had a discussion about environmental justice. And so having a park was better with regards to remediation, because remediation does not remove all the contaminants, it just makes it okay to meet a standard. And is that the standard that we want to put? 50% affordable housing in some of our lowest-income residents in a place that just sort of, quote-unquote, meets a standard? I think we can do better as a community, and our process and the way we do it is better, not referring to a ballot measure that hasn't gone through that process. That's why I don't think it's appropriate for us to refer it, because we're endorsing the sidestepping of those processes that we've put in place to protect the very people that we're claiming we want to house here in Boulder. And I think it's critical we fall back on our process.
But Matt, you've been a very strong advocate for continued operation of the airport. If it is such a deadly contaminator of our community, why is that?
So I would rather not get into a back-and-forth argument if you'll indulge me here. But, so other thoughts? And I'll just say that not everybody has to speak, we'll do a straw poll here once comments are complete. So if you want to just weigh in on the straw poll, you're welcome to. But I got Taisha, and then Nicole, and then Tara.
All right, so thank you for the opportunity to speak on this critical issue. My preference is to stick with the original language primarily for the following reasons. One, the signers signed for a particular set of things, and as our petition indicated, there was not any follow-up by, again, because of the way that we have our things, they didn't have contact information. My larger point is it reminds me of the arts tax and what petitioner signed versus what actually made onto the ballot. And now the conversations that we are getting from folks who signed that ballot, thinking it was going to be one thing, and that it is actually another thing. So my preference is to keep it as the way as the signer, although I appreciate the efforts of the 10 people that came together, it's not representative statistically of the thousands of peoples who signed on to 50% language. And it is that 50% language that is what I find most concerning. If there were not substantive changes, and I do believe that 50%, taking out that 50% affordability language is a substantive change that we are making, that we would then be approving, that doesn't pass the sniff test for me. So for those reasons, I'm hopeful that we, or rather, I will be voting to keep the original language. And I appreciate the efforts, although, again, and I'm not sure if we voted on requesting that the staff take a look at these measures and all of them, because I've never been a supporter of decommissioning the airport. So when that topic came up, I was hopeful around just, you know, I didn't know that I had the authority to say no on that. So again, I'm new, I apologize, I did not want your efforts to go to waste, but I've been pretty clear on the campaign trail on where I stand on this. And so, yeah, for those reasons, thank you so much.
Thanks. I got Nicole and then Tara.
First, I just wanted to say thank you to the Airport Neighborhood Campaign and to staff for your work to create these alternate measures for us to consider. I just keep it short, I agree with Mark. I think either one is fine, it's giving the voters a chance to vote on this issue that has been a topic of community discussion for quite some time. We said a couple weeks ago that we wanted to wait for voters to weigh in before deciding how to proceed with the airport's financial future. So I'm actually comfortable with moving the modified measures forward on our own accord, because we did say that we wanted to hear from the voters first. If they pass, and I think there is a good chance that they'll pass with a presidential year electorate, the modified measures seem as though they will have a smoother implementation of the voters' desires. And then just kind of to the point of engagement and the city's role in engagement, I think in an even-year election, when we have the most, even-year presidential election, when we have the highest voter turnout that we ever have, we are likely to get many more people engaged on this issue than we would ever get doing our own form of engagement here. And any future implementation, I think, would then go through our typical process. So anyway, we said we wanted the voters to weigh in, I would be comfortable with moving forward, I think I'm likely to be in the minority, but I would support moving forward with the alternate measures, and really appreciate everybody's time and energy whichever way we go.
Thanks, Tara.
First, I want to thank, first, I want to thank you, Laura. That was a great speech. And what I liked about it was that you said that you are glad and happy, you were happy with the original language, so that takes the stress off of us, and you know. And I also want to thank your group, of which the acronyms I forget, the A-M-N-C, for all the hard work that they put in. So how I feel is, I think that citizen-initiative ballot measures are very powerful. And for that reason, I want to keep the original language and keep it as a citizen-initiated ballot measure. Thank you for releasing me to do that in your speech, I appreciate it. I want to leave it to the voters to have it the way it was presented to the voters at the signature, at the time that you got the signatures. And so I'm excited for you, and I hope it goes well. That's all I'm going to say.
Thanks, Ryan.
I'd like to thank staff for working on this, doing so much so quickly. I'm really impressed and appreciative of that. I also want to thank Laura and her team for developing a set of alternatives in which I think you said you were equally happy, and that's a good place to be. I've heard a lot of things I agree with from my colleagues. This is not an obvious decision for me. I think I'm ultimately swayed by Taisha's points about deferring as much as we can to those who signed the ballot initiative. Again, this is not an obvious one. But yeah, I'll be voting to keep the original language.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and call on myself. Just want to echo the thanks to city staff for working hard on these negotiations, and also to Laura and the ANC team for engaging within those in good faith. I'm going to join my colleagues in expressing a desire to go with the original language rather than the revised language. Not everybody got everything that they wanted. I think it fundamentally gets to the same place, I think the voters fundamentally have the same decision either way. So I'll just go with the original language that the petitioners all signed. So appreciate the work that people did, but I'll go with the original language. And the voters will have, I think, a clear choice about what they want to decide in the fall. All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I might just call for a quick straw poll. Who would like to stick with the original language as seen by the petitioners? Raise your hand. Okay, I got one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, and I guess, who would rather use the alternate language? Just to be clear. All right, we got three. Okay, well, thanks for the discussion, folks. We'll go with the original petition language. And so if we can turn now to Tina's proposal. Tina, do you want to reintroduce that?
Yeah, I, as I put in my hotline, I just wanted to make a further change to the boards and commission language to remove the sentence that requires or sets a gender quota, I suppose, as well as some subjective language describing the individuals that might participate into the board. And there it is in B. Sorry, I didn't see the slide. So, and just the rationale is, I appreciate a diversity of genders on any board, but it's not the only diversity trait I would lift up. So I think that to give, to weigh importance for just that one characteristic or demographic doesn't make sense to me. And then the other piece is, we've run into some trouble historically with subjective language. And I think the, when we did our conversations about the boards and commissions appointments, I thought we all considered a lot of different factors that aren't fully represented in this language, and we did a good job on our, with our own work. So just so people don't get caught up in it, I would prefer to remove it. So from five-city residents, and then taking out everything until it says who are at least 18-year-olds, et cetera. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Any clarifying questions or comments on Tina's proposal? I can just straw poll it.
Sure. So go to B. And then the second line, do you see five-city residents? And then from there, until the two lines down that says, "and who are at least 18 years."
I'm going to read the language, if you don't mind. So the language to be removed would be the language that says, "not all of one gender identity who are well-known for their ability, probity, public spirit, and particular fitness to serve on such respective commissions."
I have a question for you two.
Yep.
Why did, could you describe, explain why you want to take out not all of one? We were trying to, in the past, make it so that it isn't like, like, all men or something like that. So tell me why you disagree with it.
First, I don't think it needs to be in the language. I think we can do that informally, but I also think that if we're looking at characteristics that we think will lead to better or more representative decision-making, I'm not convinced that gender is the only characteristic to focus on, and that as a council, we can look at a variety of characteristics, not putting gender above all else by calling it out in our language.
Lauren?
Thank you. I really appreciate you bringing this forward, Tina, and I support most of the change. I, however, would like to see us keep the not-all-of-one-gender-identity portion, because I think without it, I mean, just, there are a number of times where we have not been able to make that quota, or, you know, like, we have a number of boards and commissions that only are maintaining one person of a different gender identity because we have this rule. And I do think that while it is certainly not the only type of diversity we should be looking for in a board or commission member, it is still important, an important thing for us to be looking at in the makeup of our boards and commissions. Thanks.
Thanks, Lauren. Did you want to respond?
Yeah, Lauren, so do you feel in those situations that you would not have been able to come to the same representation without this language? That this is the language you relied on to make that decision?
So in many cases, we have low numbers of applicants for a board or commission, and we decide to hold open that position for another, for a longer period to get more applicants, because we don't have an applicant fitting this requirement. And I think that without this rule, we would be less inclined to continue holding open those positions and continuing the search.
Mark, did you want to chime in here?
Yeah, just a clarification. So the language here in B is your default language if you do not have an ordinance in place. So the intent here is that if voters do pass this initiative, this change, you would be able to, we would be able to bring forward an ordinance that sets forward criteria as you wish. And so there's another opportunity. So appreciate the discussion, and still important because it's your default if an ordinance doesn't come forward, but our intent, if passed in November, would be to come with an ordinance in short order after that.
So in other words, that we wouldn't have to go back to the voters to remove or replace that clause about gender identity?
Correct. You could set your own policy and code.
It's helpful to understand. Mark?
Yeah, a question not related to deleting the gender identity language. Are you also looking to delete all of the language that relates to ability, probity, public spirit, and particular fitness? Are there any particular standards you would want to have in its place? Or simply leave it to the full discretion of council on whatever basis they want to proceed?
I think in this case, it would be up to council, and I think that the new language does give us flexibility by commission. And I think that this is so subjective, it doesn't, and it certainly didn't come up during our discussions during the board and commission appointments. So I just, I just think it's unnecessary language.
Okay. I think I'd probably take a different view on that one.
Okay, I'm not seeing other hands raised. So I'm going to try two separate straw polls, if that's all right, because I think we got two separate issues here to some extent. So the first straw poll I'm going to do is about removing the statement, "who are well-known for their ability, probity, public spirit, and particular fitness to serve on such respective commissions." And I'll just call on myself here and say that I support removing this, because we don't look for people who are well-known necessarily for these things. So I don't think it's generally been practiced. So all in favor of removing that clause? Raise your hand. I got six, seven? Eight? Okay, so we will remove that clause. So now a separate straw poll of who would like to remove the language, "not all of one gender identity." Can raise your hand. We got one on that one. Okay. Well, Tina, thanks for the, bringing the proposal forward. So it looks like we'll be removing that second clause from that language. All right, so we've now worked through our key issues. I would look to staff. My understanding is that we want to continue the public hearing, but we also need to give guidance about which ordinances we're moving forward to that continued hearing. Would you just give us a guidance on exactly what kind of a motion you would need?
Yes, we would need a motion to continue the original citizen-initiated petitions to a continued September, continued second reading on September 5. The charter items for executive sessions and council compensation would also be continued second reading. The board and commission ordinance would be scheduled for third reading, so that we can make that change and bring it back then.
Do you want us to make a, maybe a separate motion to pass on second reading, the board and commission one, to include that change?
Yes, that would work. Thank you.
I can just run this unless people would like to make the motions. Okay. Let me make sure I got that. Okay, so I'll go ahead and move that we pass on second reading ordinance 8639. And I'm not going to read all the rest of the language, but with the modification of removing the language as discussed. Is that good enough?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Do we want a roll call for that, Alicia?
Yes, sir.
All right, please. We've got a motion and a second roll call.
We'll start the roll call for ordinance 8639 with Councilmember Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Councilmember Folkerts.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
And Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 8639 is hereby approved, continued, as amended.
Great. I think it was just approved rather than continued.
Yes, and it will be for a third reading on the 5th.
And then I'll go ahead and make an additional motion to continue the second reading hearing to September 5th of ordinances 8640, which is about council compensation, 8641 about executive sessions, 8638, which is the decommissioning the airport ballot measure, and 8643, which is the repurpose our runways ballot measure.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Another roll call, please, Alicia.
And just for clarifications with the city attorney's office, do I need to call the roll call for each individual item or because the mayor grouped the motion?
I believe ordinances are typically done by roll call.
Exactly.
Okay, my apologies, I was trying to shortcut us a little bit then. All right, well, let's start with 8640 then.
All right, thank you, Mayor Brockett. And it was seconded by, I'm sorry, Councilmember Marquess?
No, Spear.
Spear, perfect, thank you. We'll start the roll call on 86, ordinance 8640 with Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Councilmember Folkerts.
Yes.
Yes.
Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
I'm going to decline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
And Benjamin.
I missed you, I'm sorry. Councilmember Weiner.
It's okay. I'm going to say yes, but I want to make a statement at some point that is extremely short. You let me know when I should.
Let's finish the vote and then you can go.
Councilmember Weiner?
Yes.
And Adams. Yes.
And Benjamin, I think.
Don't forget me, yes.
Didn't forget you. Councilmember Benjamin, I got colors going on all of us.
It's okay. It's still a yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your understanding. I'll get better at this. Okay, so 86, ordinance 8640 is hereby continued and approved with a vote of eight to one with Councilmember Wallach declining, which is a no.
Great. And Tara, did you want to say something on this?
Yeah, just for the record, even though I said yes, I am not saying that I'm for or against it, but I'm just moving it along. And we can all talk about that during election time.
Duly noted. All right, I'll go ahead and then move that we continue the second reading to September 5th for ordinance 8641.
And Mayor Brockett, we'll start the roll call.
Do I have a second?
We're doing, yeah, a second.
Great, we have a motion. I know I wasn't allowed to do the package. Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Okay, thank you. The roll call for ordinance 8641 will start with Councilmember Folkerts.
No. Yes.
Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
Point of order, we haven't discussed any of this this evening. Is this just moving it along?
It's just moving it along, correct.
Then yes.
But if you wanted to make any changes, now would be a great time to do it.
Well, I only have a couple of questions.
Well, let's.
Well, they could become changes.
We're kind of in the motion and a second and the middle of voting.
Okay.
So do, hmm. I'm going to withdraw my motion for the moment and give Mark a chance to ask his questions.
And there's just a couple. This is on executive session. The last entry for what we may do on executive session lacks a little context. Finalists for what? I'm sure there's some definition of what finalists we can go into executive session for, but I don't know what they are.
Thank you for your question. It would be finalists for positions hired by the council. So for us, that would be the city manager, city attorney, and municipal court judge.
Okay, but it doesn't quite say that, and so I don't, you know, I prefer some precision in my charter amendments.
Thank you. If I could explain, this language is taken directly from state law so that we can use state cases and that sort of interpretive standards. So if it came up, we would look to state law to see how that's been defined.
I do understand, but it's like a fragment that says we can use executive session when reviewing finalists. And that doesn't clarify for me who we are using executive session on. And I agree with what you're saying, that it should be for the positions that we actually can hire and fire, but I'm just finding the language to be imprecise.
We could add a definition, certainly.
Okay.
Nicole, I think, had a colloquy on that.
Yes, and I think it was something I heard possibly from Matt, but just if we could just say as per state law, if that finalist as per state law or something like that.
That'll work for me.
Sufficiently clear, but yeah, I think it was you, Matt, who said that, but anyway, yeah.
But if we, wouldn't that require us to put it off for a meeting? Isn't that an amendment?
We'd pass it on second reading tonight, and it would go to a third reading on September 5th.
Then I might as well request the precise definition of who we can go into executive session for.
If, could I make a suggestion? Instead of putting it in the charter, I would suggest putting it in ordinance because we will need to develop procedures to implement executive session, some of which might be by ordinance. Because once we put it in the charter, we can only change it by another vote.
Then I can live with the definition as permitted by state law. But the language as is just, it doesn't really say anything.
Are you thinking of follow-up ordinance to clarify that?
Oh, no, if we use the proposed language that we're going to do this in accordance with state law, I'm fine. And that would be part of our ordinance. That would be part of our charter, and then if we want to do a follow-up ordinance at any point to more specifically define who we can conduct executive session on, we're free to do that.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt. Just to clarify, maybe this is, what you're suggesting, Mark, isn't a change to this ordinance in its current form, which would be a charter change, therefore not changing our schedule to require it pass on emergency. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just want to clarify that we're not changing the schedule, but it would be an adaptation in an ordinance at a later date to take care of this concern, correct?
Yeah, I want to be clear, I didn't think this was going to be particularly controversial. The language simply says, in addition to interviewing finalists in a public forum, the council may interview finalists in executive session. I want to know what finalists we're talking about. And if it's finalists as defined in state law, I'm fine with that.
So I'm going to call on myself and then reach out to Teresa here. I think the value in using the exact language we've got here is that it exactly matches state law and allows us to rely on all the case law for the state law for matters of clarification. And while I get that that's just clarification language to say as in state law, it then is no longer the same as state law. But so I wanted to check, Teresa, do you feel like that puts us maybe in a slightly weaker state if we add that clause or not?
No, I think if we were to simply add as per state law, that would be perfectly fine.
Okay.
I do believe it would require an amendment tonight.
It would.
So that we could go to third reading on the 5th.
Okay, then I'm fine with it. If Teresa says that, I'm fine with it. Taisha, you want to chime in?
You know I'm serious when I move over my stuff. It is, oh, writing my own quote, it is confusing to the voter, and that is my concern. So as a voter, I would like to remind us that it took two statewide elections for us to actually remove enslavement from our constitution because of the way that it was written. And I would hate to jeopardize this effort because, one, before I joined city council, I did not know who the city council had three members of the thing that we, you know, were direct, et cetera, et cetera. So again, my preference is actually to do both, to do both the it's the law and to add a definition and to the point of we'd have to change the rules. Well, we would have to change the rules anyway because we only have authority over those three people right now. So again, I don't get shook by we have to go change the rules, especially if we would have to change the rules anyway to accommodate the authorities that we currently have. So my request is that we be as specific as possible to our voters, they know exactly what they are voting on. And so, as I said, that, you know, again, if we have a majority to just change it to the state thing, I'll go with it. But I would like us to really consider, let's be specific about what we want. We're asking for executive sessions around finalists. We have major decisions that are going to be coming up that are outside of those three folks. And so again, I just don't want anything that would create confusion for our voters in how we language this. So that is my thoughts and recommendations. Thank you.
So Taisha, to clarify, so in addition to as defined by state law, you had another change that you want to make? I didn't quite catch what that would be.
I'm still not clear on why we don't want to be as specific as possible by adding something in our definitions that says finalists are specific to the three employees that council has permission on. Because the way that reads right now is that every finalist, for example, our Department of Transportation, our Department of, right, like, we, and that is going to be the expectation when people sign this. And that might be a reason why people don't sign this, because they think that they're giving us that authority, and they're not giving us that authority. So that's my concern.
Yeah, no, I hear your concern.
Okay, so what's your recommendation on how to make it?
Well, the question was the specific change. So the specific change is to add a definition of what the meaning finalist is?
Yes.
I'll look to our attorneys here about how that might be.
If we wanted to do it within the charter provisions so that it's all out there, what I think we could change the language to under section eight here would be in addition to interviewing finalists, new language, for the positions of city attorney, city manager, and presiding municipal court judge.
Thank you.
That sounds great to me.
Thank you. Okay. I'm good.
Okay, Nicole, I'll straw poll.
So I think there's one more, though, right? The auditor?
That's correct.
Okay.
Add that, too.
And I guess my question is, because I think the first time that we came around to this question, there was a concern that you all had, and it was something about then if anything were to ever change, then it would have to go back to a vote in order to change that. But I guess my question is, could anything ever change that would not have to go back to a vote anyway, right? So if we were to, all of a sudden, there's, I don't know, a new council employee, wouldn't that have to go to the voters as well? And so could that be addressed at that point to kind of adjust them both? I can't even imagine what that would be at this point, just for future.
I think that's correct because who reports to the city council as direct employees is in the charter. So there would need to be a charter change first to give you authority over that employee. So when we went and made that change, we could come back to this one and add that position in.
Okay, and thank you then. I'm comfortable with moving forward with more specific language there.
Okay, can I straw poll? And Erin, do you mind repeating that language since fresh in people's minds?
Okay. So subsection eight would read, in addition to interviewing finalists for the positions of city manager, city attorney, presiding municipal court judge, and city auditor in a public forum.
All in favor, straw poll of people who'd like to see us make that change? Can I just clarify? I think I got unanimous. What's that meant? Just clarify, this, will this force us, are we adopting, going to adopt this tonight so that we don't have to do this on emergency on the 5th? Yeah, we'll now pass it amended. Yeah, yeah. Sensitive to doing emergencies. Okay, so Mark, you had another question?
No, just sorry for the inconvenience.
All right. Great, so if people don't mind, I'll pick this back up again and move that we pass on second reading ordinance 8641 as with the amendment as specified by Erin Poe. All right, got a motion and a second. Let's get back to voting on this, this ordinance here.
Thank you, sir. I'll get my notes up here. All right, four, we'll start the vote with 86, for 8641 with Councilmember Folkerts.
No.
Yes.
Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
And Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Ordinance 8641 is hereby passed as amended with a vote of eight to one.
Great, we'll finish out our last two. Move that we continue the second reading to September 5th for ordinance 8638 regarding decommissioning the airport. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, roll call, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll start the roll call for 8638 with Councilmember Marquess.
Yes.
Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
What are we voting on? My problem is, I'm looking at this thing, and it's saying something different than what we're doing. So I'm just, I'm on the struggle bus. My apologies.
8638, ordinance 8630.
This is the citizen-initiated ballot measure, the original language.
To Tara's earlier point of, I may not agree, but I agree with a voter's right to vote on it.
Right.
So then, yes. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
And Councilmember Folkerts.
Yes.
Ordinance 8638 is hereby approved.
Continued.
As continued and continued, thank you.
Or continued rather than approved, just to be clear.
Approved to be continued.
There you go. Love it, love it.
That's what I meant to say.
Okay. And then finally, I'll move that we continue the second reading to September 5th of ordinance 8643 regarding repurpose our runways.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir. We'll start the roll call for ordinance 8643's continuance and approval with Councilmember Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Councilmember Folkerts.
Yes.
And Marquess.
Yes.
Ordinance 8643 is hereby approved to be continued.
All right, everybody, thanks for working through the legislative sausage there. And thanks again to city staff for all their work on this and to the ANC committee for their collaboration. All right, can we move to our second and final public hearing, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Our second public hearing on tonight's agenda is item 5B. It is the consideration of the following items related to the North Voder Subcommunity Plan. I Item number one is the consideration of a motion to approve limited amendments to the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan to include a vision for a mixed-use creative campus in the Village Center area and update the land use description for the Ponderosa manufactured housing community as outlined in attachment A to the staff memorandum. And item number two is the consideration of the following conditions approved by the planning board on August the sixth, twenty twenty-four. First, that item is that the community facilities map on page eighteen and any associated text be updated with any facilities that have been completed to date. And second, that the creative campus boundary in the Village Center diagram on page fifteen includes the mixed-use area of the east side of Broadway.
Thanks, Alicia. Great job giving the team time to settle in and sit down. Mark, you want to get us started?
Thanks, man. It's like.
Almost enough time.
It's like getting into a bobsled over here. Appreciate the time. All right, one more item tonight. Thanks, Alicia, for outlining the item. These are some original project-specific amendments to the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan. We also took the opportunity to do some cleanup related to some recent projects at Ponderosa as well. So I am delaying and about to hand off to Christopher Johnson and Sarah Horn from Planning and Development, which will walk us through a short presentation, and then we are open for questions. Do you all need the clerk's office to pull up the slides?
We got it.
We do, okay.
Okay.
We'll pull them up over here. Give us a minute.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I'm Sarah Horn, senior city planner on the comp planning team, and tonight I'm going to walk you through proposed amendments to the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan. And Christopher Johnson, the comprehensive planning manager, is here with me, so. Our objective this evening is a public hearing and the consideration of a motion to approve limited amendments to the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan to include a vision for a mixed-use creative campus in the Village Center area and update the land use description for the Ponderosa manufactured community, housing community, as outlined in attachment A to the staff memorandum you have. And also, two additional amendments approved by planning board last week on August sixth. One, that the community facilities map on page eighteen and any associated text be updated with any facilities that have been completed to date, and that the creative campus boundary in the Village Center diagram on page fifteen includes the mixed-use area on the east side of Broadway. And I'll get into more detail on those in a little bit. So our agenda for this item includes the staff presentation and then a public hearing and council action. So first, I'll talk about the background and process for the proposed amendments. So for a little context, Boulder has ten distinct subcommunities, and these are areas, as you may know, within the service area of the city that are defined by physical boundaries such as roads, waterways, or topography. And our discussion tonight is centered on North Boulder, seen in light green on the top left corner of the graphic from the comprehensive plan. It sits on the northwest side of the city and includes various neighborhoods and facilities. You can go to the next slide. Right, oh, no, no, that's okay. Sorry, I just want to describe some of the facilities that are in North Boulder, just to give you an idea, like the North Boulder Library, the Boulder Shelter, Primos Park, Boulder Meadows, the Holiday Neighborhood, the Ponderosa Community, and there are a variety of local businesses in the area. Okay. And then here, this is just a timeline of some significant events related to the North Boulder Subcommunity that apply to this item. So in nineteen ninety-five, the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan becomes the first of the city's subcommunity plans. In two thousand seventeen, the North Boulder Art District was formalized by council, and in two thousand twenty-two, a concept plan for forty-four oh-one Broadway was submitted that was generally supported by planning board and council but had some inconsistencies with the subcommunity plan. Staff subsequently received direction to amend the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, which is where we are today, and it's highlighted by the yellow bar on the timeline. A future step on the timeline will be updating the BVCP land use map, and that will be done as part of a comp plan major update or as part of a future development review process. It's not part of the discussion this evening. And then, a subcommunity plan communicates the expectations about the future of a subcommunity and guides decision-making about subcommunity resilience and evolution into the future. The North Boulder Subcommunity Plan envisions a beautiful, diverse, inclusive, and adaptive North Boulder. In the past thirty years since the plan was written, the subcommunity has been evolving from a larger rural area to an area with nodes of more urban mixed-use neighborhoods. And this evolution has been guided by the subcommunity plan. North Boulder has also become a focal point for arts and creative industries in the city, and this activity was enhanced by the official art district designation it received in two thousand seventeen. And the district is highlighted in dark gray on this map on the screen, and it encompasses the areas along Broadway north of Violet and abutting properties to the west and east of Broadway. And within this area, as I mentioned on the timeline, in two thousand twenty-two, an early concept plan package for forty-four oh-one Broadway was submitted. It's pictured on the screen with north at the bottom of the screen. The plan includes forty-four eighty-one Broadway, which is the area along Four Mile Canyon Creek to the north, which is at the bottom of the screen, as I said, and it also includes parcels that take up the northwest corner of Violet and Broadway. When the concept package was submitted, it included a new location for the Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art, live-work units, other residential units, and commercial spaces. The project team engaged the community in a variety of ways during that process, and as I mentioned earlier, garnered general support from the community and from planning board and council. And that brings us to the character and vision described for this area in the subcommunity plan. There are several recommendations for this corner based on its strategic location within what the plan envisioned as a village center. The diagram you see, north facing up this time, illustrates the village center area concept, and that it become a place where people can live in close proximity to work. The plan also calls for the western portion of the red outlined area, which is a little hard to see, but the left side of the outlined portion with a diagonal hatching to contain residential uses at mixed-use densities. In terms of land use, the plan assigns broad future land use categories across the entire subcommunity. Here, you see the corner that we're talking about of Broadway and Violet. North is toward the top again of the image. The blue shaded area was designated in the plan to be medium-density residential, and the red was designated as low-density residential. And this is where there is a bit of inconsistency in the plan, especially along Broadway. Like I discussed in the previous slide, this area is part of the Village Center, and the character and vision for the Village Center calls for a mix of uses to complement the Main Street business area to the north. Excuse me. Even so, the future land use categories in the plan are residential-only in nature. Later in the presentation, I will explain how our proposed amendments intend to address this. The last element of the current plan that I'll touch on is the existing land use in the Ponderosa Community, which you see outlined in red on this diagram. Located just northwest of Broadway and Violet, the site was designated as manufactured housing in the plan. In two thousand nineteen, a site plan with a land use change request was approved for this community. That approval initiated a BVCP, or the comp plan land use change, for the property from manufactured housing to medium-density residential. Staff are proposing to correctly align the subcommunity plan with the current BVCP land use designation based on city attorney's recommendation. So this is merely a cleanup item. So based on that context, I'll now move on to the proposed amendments. The proposed amendment updates to the subcommunity plan include adding a description of the character and future land use for a proposed creative campus area at the corner of Broadway and Violet, and updating the Ponderosa Community land use map to align with the BVCP land use designation, as I've mentioned. The pages listed here are the pages from the existing plan that will potentially be updated. After I go over the community process for this amendment proposal, I'll cover each of them individually. So for community engagement, our goals for this process were to, first, to ensure our community was aware that this process is underway; second, to ensure that the most impacted stakeholders knew how to get involved in the process and participate in the public hearings; and, third, to gather and share any feedback we heard from them with you. We worked on focused outreach to connect with local tenants and business owners and the residents of the nearby Ponderosa and Boulder Meadows manufactured housing communities. We co-designed the community meeting with two community connectors from the Ponderosa Community and shared information with connectors from Boulder Meadows. We mailed informational postcards with engagement information to seven hundred and sixty residents and renters within six hundred feet of the property, and we translated the postcards into both Spanish and Nepali, and we had a Spanish interpreter at the meeting. And Vivian Castro-Waldridge, an engagement specialist, and I went door-to-door to the business owners and employees at the sites, on the site of the corner of Broadway and Violet to share information about the process and invite them to the community meeting. And many of them spoke Spanish, and Vivian spoke with them in Spanish to inform them of the meeting. And we held the meeting on June first of this year, where we described our role, the city's role, in the subcommunity plan amendment process and gave attendees the opportunity to share any concerns or questions they had. Fifteen community members attended, and all of their questions were related to the property owner's specific plans for the site and not the proposed amendment. The property owner also attended the meeting with representatives from BMOCA as well, and he was able to answer their questions directly. And he also mentioned to the group that he was committed to continuing to communicate with the community throughout the planning process. Now to the details of the proposed amendment. Updates to page thirteen in the neighborhood section of the plan include the addition of the map on the right side of the screen, which shows the Nobo Art District boundaries within the subcommunity, again, in dark gray, accompanied by a description of the district. Updates here also include a description of a creative campus indicated by the red circle on the map. The vision for this creative campus area will include a range of uses at a higher density, intensity, excuse me, than the existing plan called for in nineteen ninety-five. Next, on page fifteen and seventeen, we have proposed to include the addition of a creative campus location to the Village Center diagram seen on the right side of the screen, highlighted in red on the west side of Broadway. Also noted by the red dashed box on the east side is the area that would be included as a future creative campus in response to the additional amendment approved by planning board. Along with the change to this diagram, we've proposed language which describes how a creative campus could serve as an anchor to the Nobo Arts District and could include a mix of uses such as housing, retail, light industrial, manufacturing, art studios, and a museum. And then, moving on to page eighteen, the map of community facilities, we're proposing to add an indicator of the proposed creative campus location to this map with the red triangle, as you can see on the diagram. And the intention of this is just to add a geographic recommendation for the location to the plan. And as noted earlier, planning board approved an additional amendment to update this diagram and any associated text with any projects that have been completed in the subcommunity to date. And then lastly, staff proposes to update page thirty-four of the plan, which includes a future growth land use map. Changes to this map include updating the future land use for the proposed creative campus area from low and medium-density residential to mixed-use. This is the area outlined in red on the map with the proposed MU designation. Mixed-use would allow the flexibility to support the types of uses and intensity desired for a creative campus. And then, updates to this map would also include the land use change from manufactured housing to medium-density residential for the Ponderosa Community that I described earlier. You can see it outlined in red with the MR designation, and that, again, is just simply a cleanup item. And then, so, the changes that I just discussed with you are consistent with the BVCP policies on the screen. Per, we'll just point out, two-point-one-four and two-point-three-three, the amendment introduces infill development with a variety of complementary uses to Main Street business, to the Main Street business area, and acts as a transition to nearby residential. The creative campus is also meant to serve as a community entryway to the Nobo Arts District with a distinct sense of arrival. The amendment reinforces that the area should not include singularly residential uses, but instead be a compact and mixed-use hub for arts and culture with opportunities to live in close proximity to work, which is more appropriate for a gateway location along Broadway. So we brought the proposed amendments to planning board, as I mentioned, on August sixth. After questions and comments from the board and the public, planning board voted five to zero to approve the limited amendments to the subcommunity plan that are described in attachment A of your memo. In addition, planning board approved the following two additional amendments: to update the community facilities map and text with the facilities completed to date, as I mentioned, and to expand the creative campus boundary on the diagram to include the mixed-use area on the east side of Broadway. So tonight, staff recommends that you, council, approve the amendments proposed by staff in attachment A and the two additional amendments approved by planning board on August sixth. So I'll now turn it over to you, mayor, for the public hearing and comments and questions from council.
All right, thanks so much for walking us through all that. Appreciate it. Any clarifying questions from council members? Mark?
Can you tell me what impact you expect these changes to have on the light industrial uses and other commercial uses on Broadway?
Yeah, thanks for the question, council member. We anticipate that this change within the subcommunity plan is likely to have a very limited effect on those existing uses, in particular along Broadway. You know, right now, that designation is medium-density residential within the subcommunity plan, and so changing that to mixed-use would actually conceivably encourage or allow a greater number of light industrial types of uses in that area than what is currently within the subcommunity plan.
Okay. And I guess I'm kind of curious, after all that effort, you only, we only got fifteen people to go to a community meeting? I mean, that seems rather meager, if I can say so.
Yeah.
I'm not disputing the effort that was put into it, but the results are not exactly a resounding endorsement of what we're doing in some fashion.
Did you have a question there, Mark?
Yeah.
I mean, do you have any thoughts about that?
We tried, we reached out, we, you know, did a lot of work, I think, maybe, I don't know, but your point is taken. And yes, it's hard when you do all of that planning. And, I mean, it's great that fifteen people showed up. I guess that's how I'm trying to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, did you want to add to that?
I do. Brad Mueller, planning and development services director. You know, having done planning processes for a lot of years now, there are some that resonate more with residents than others. I myself have been involved in, you know, efforts that were very extensive to try to get input over the years, and I would say, you know, one thing is, this is a little obtuse to the average reader when you're sending it out. And I also think that there was some level of recognition that these are somewhat technical cleanup matters and/or necessary technical consequences of the feedback that council previously gave. So that would be my opinion about that.
Got it. You're saying not everyone is fascinated by updates to subcommunity plans? Tina, and Alicia.
I also heard, though, that the community connectors were involved in having active conversations that may not be reflected in the number of people that went to our meeting, but in fact, those meetings took place where they lived, and that feedback might have happened in a number that we're not seeing as well.
Taisha?
Thank you, council member, for that generous component that there may be others that were consulted and aren't reflected in this report. But if they're not in this report, they're not in this report. So if we're having conversations with community connectors, and I would want to know how many, where were they located, right? I mean, I mean, and this is actually why, I don't know if some of you all had a chance to read the Council Agenda Committee request that I had around our community engagement framework, and learning more about the framework and its implementation as a whole, as opposed to project to project to project to project, because we're seeing some significant inconsistencies in the level of engagement. And so, again, I too am grateful for the 15 that showed up. I'm grateful that the community connectors are doing the work that they're doing to supplement, but where I'm underwhelmed is the protocols of, oh, okay, it's 15, all right, then what do we do? We know that's a low threshold, okay, well, we got the community connectors. I just need to know, you know, that there's more, that there's a deeper level of community engagement. And for something that's going to have such a significant impact on the look and feel of our community, the construction cost, it is a significant effort that is about to happen. And so, that's why I would love to see more. So I did make a note about that 15 number and some concerns around, is that reflective of their interest? I'm not saying yes or no, but it does raise a flag. I actually had a question just around the Arts Commission. Again, although I appreciate the Planning Board and all of the rules around the when and where they need to be engaged, I also honor that they do not have all of the expertise that we need in the conversations that we're having. And I'm specifically talking about mixed-use and arts and all of these things, and I'm just curious, the level of expertise on the Planning Board on its own to talk about these things. And I would have loved, so I'm curious to know if, at any point, the Arts Commission had been involved, and if so, if there were any, you know, feedback to these types of recommendations. I'm specifically speaking to the issue related to mixed-use and residential. Again, from the artists that I've, you know, had the privilege of meeting and talking with, that need for housing has, is quite significant, and as is the need for space to work and to show the work and sell the work. And so, again, just curious, one, if the Arts Commission was engaged, and, two, for our fellow council members, as we're thinking about the ways to deepen our boards and commissions work, that this is yet another example where we went to our default, where we've got players who could have substantively contributed on this topic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, council member. We did not reach out to the Arts Commission specifically on this particular amendment for the sub-community plan. I am not aware if they were consulted as part of the concept plan review. My suspicion is that they probably were part of that conversation, and certainly, if a future full development review process would come forward, that would certainly be an aspect that we would be interested in exploring in a lot more depth. But because this amendment to the sub-community plan was very limited in scope and really just changing the, you know, the use category as described in the sub-community plan to be mixed-use and allow for these range of things, including art studios and housing and mixed-use, that we did not consult them directly.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Could I call up here and just add a little to that? So, I'm the council representative for BMOCA, and so I can tell you that at many phases, the Arts Commission has been very much not just part of it, but has been an eager supporter of this creative campus and what it can be, and that unique combination of residence and art. And so, I think to KJ's point, maybe not at this particular place, but in terms of when we get into the more details of how the spaces are uniquely set up and that sort of thing, I think the Arts Commission will play yet again. Certainly, when we get to the cultural master plan, that will really sort of help link back up with what the creative campus is. So, they've had some roles when it was defined and needed, and then it's planning and that's everything, and then they'll get back into the mix as we get closer into those pieces.
I absolutely appreciate that knowing. And again, this is about their lives, their livelihood, and where they're working, and I want to hear directly from artists. So, in addition to all of the incredible expertise that we have on planning, so, again, I always ask the question of who gets the, who gets the "privilege," air quotes, of making, of being in the conversation when we're making the structural decisions, right? You're talking about window dressing and, you know, what color we want the walls, right? I'm, we're, at this moment, though, we're talking about how much residential would potentially be available to artists, and I would like our artist communities to be involved in this specific decision. So, you know, I understand the process and all of the things, but that's why I ran for office, so I could be on the microphone and say, hey, y'all, would it be, I would love to have our, the folks who have lived and learned experience, who will be the most impacted by what policy decisions that we're making, that they are actively participating when we're making the structural decisions that we're making. So, again, great to hear that they are involved throughout the process, disappointed to hear they were not involved in this particular aspect. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call myself. I do have a question. The Planning Board had that recommendation to extend the creative campus across Broadway. And so, that section that it would be extended to is currently, it's like relatively recently built apartments, maybe 10-odd years old. So what would be the functional outcome of adding that section to the creative campus designation?
Yeah, thank you. It's probably going to be fairly minimal, I would say. It's, you know, it's really an opportunity to, as we know, this sub-community plan has 30-year lifespan and will continue on for some period of time, and so, it's unlikely, but potentially, that area could redevelop at some point in the future, and that would at least just allow for the opportunity for that notion of a mixed-use creative campus to expand to the east side of Broadway, really act as a gateway that spans both sides of the street. But, you know, on the ground and from a functional standpoint going forward, I think it would have very minimal impact, which is partly why, you know, staff is comfortable making that change as part of these amendments.
Got it. So potentially, an increase in flexibility down the road if and when somebody thought about redeveloping that side or...
That's correct.
Renovating or something. Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and go to our public hearing. So we have one person signed up to speak, and that is Lynn Segal. Lynn, you get three minutes.
I remember the old days of the Safeway going to a vote of all the people of Boulder. I love the arts as much as anybody, but I like to see some arts in downtown Boulder, not in a suburb of Boulder, which I consider this to be. And all I can do in Central Boulder is go out to eat, which I don't, or go visit a commercial property that is not occupied, because Steven Tebow just holds it because he can, with nobody even in there. Where's September School as an arts center? Where's our arts center? All we've got is the dairy. What the hay? Central Boulder is where the bigger art centers belong. And I've talked to the guy that's here today about, you know, BMOCA, and supposedly, it's supposed to go up there. Well, where's our arts? Where's our arts and culture in Boulder? That isn't Boulder. That's north, that's a suburb, like Arapaho is, like the weather vane is, you know, an isolated area. I don't support more and more development, more and more density, more and more times when my internet goes out and it's a week before someone comes, because they can't afford to hire anybody, because we're overpopulated. Sorry, that's my problem with Nobo. We're already too overpopulated. We were too overpopulated when my dad came here in '48 at 30,000. So, that's just my opinion. And September School's supposed to be a heroin recovery center? That's what Michael Bosma said when we threatened him, you know, that we didn't want 311 Mapleton, the academy up there, said, hey, you oppose us, and we're going to stick a heroin recovery center up at 311 Mapleton. Instead, he went ahead and he's proposing it for the September School. Where's our arts center in Boulder? You tell me. There's nothing to do but ride my bike around. And North Boulder doesn't even have a decent grocery, other than ideal, for that whole huge, massive development, all those condos up there with the armory. What is this place? Got no soul. And the center needs to be the center, arts and culture.
Thank you. And that brings our public hearing to a close. Bring us back to council for discussion of the proposed amendments to the North Boulder Subcommuniti Plan. Matt?
Yeah, I just want to add some further context, just to, for you all to sort of know in some greater detail, the thoroughness and thoughtfulness that the BMOCA and their hired team have been doing in pursuit of this creative campus. It has gone through multiple iterations, and I think there's some really cool news coming on right, just recently. I know BMOCA just sent us an email regarding that they've down-selected from 65 candidates for architect down to five, and hope to have the final three selected right around the November timeframe. So, the ball is moving, and there is, and these firms look really, really awesome and really cool. And so I think there's just a great opportunity here with this campus, and I just want to give credit to Davi Dodone over there, and, you know, the work that his team have done have been fantastic, and just watching it from the board has been really inspiring to see it, and I think it's going to come together real nicely. And so I just appreciate where the support has been for us to keep moving that ball forward, but it's pretty tremendous, and I think it's quite a vision, it's quite inspiring, so hopefully make it come to fruition.
Yep, Taysha.
Thank you. And Matt, this is the perfect example of why also in that Council Agenda Committee requests to get updates from our, the different boards and commissions that we represent the city on, for information exactly like this, to know that, oh, you all have been talking about, that this has been something, so to get those kind of updates, so we don't have to wait for moments like this where, you know, the community assumes that nothing's happening, when absolutely lots have been happening. I also just want to lift up that, as a former North Boulder resident for eight years, North Boulder is 100% a part of Boulder, and so I just commend our community for thinking about North Boulder and not having everything in one location, but recognizing that we actually, for a lot of different reasons, need to spread the joy across the landscape, across the footprint of our city. I will say, though, that, you know, now that BMOCA and that museum is leaving the downtown, do recognize that there is, right, a gap in that, you know, in the diversity of options that are available down there. And I look to, you know, our downtown Boulder partners and others to think about how we can make sure that we have a very strong artistic footprint across our city. So, thank you again, Matt, for representing us and for that additional information about BMOCA.
Thanks. I don't see any hands raised, but somebody could potentially make a motion.
Oh, whoops, sorry, I forgot this last thing, because I didn't have it circled. Facilities. So what are we doing with some of the facilities of that? So again, I know that some of these kind of conversations may have happened before some of us newbies got on council, but, you know, as that information becomes available, I'm, you know, or, yeah, what are facilities footprint, and maybe that's something we'll talk about at the update to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan as well. So I'm patient, but I am curious.
Okay, yeah, maybe put a flag on that one and ask cities to have to be thinking about that for future updates.
Okay. And Matt looked like he was going to say something. No? About the, what we're going to do with the building? Do you have any intel on that?
And with the building just over there? The BMOCA building?
Has BMOCA talked about, like, they're going to move, and so...
Yeah, well, I guess...
Those are ongoing discussions between, you know, BMOCA and the city manager's office, and sort of where it fits in with everything else that's happening along 13. So those are ongoing conversations, but the focus right now is to get this creative campus up and running, and that conversation, I'm sure, will come later.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Anybody want to raise their hand? Maybe get a motion on the table? Oh, Lauren's got it.
I would like to make a motion to approve the limited amendments of the, to the North Boulder Subcommuniti Plan, including a vision for a mixed-use creative campus in the Village Center area and update the land use description for the Ponderosa manufactured housing community as outlined in Attachment A to the staff memorandum. Although, I would be interested in also including the area as called out by Planning Board.
I think you can keep going in the suggested motion language. It includes those two amendments. Or at least the copy I've got does.
Copy I have does not.
Okay, so we've got, Lauren's got a motion on the table. Maybe I'll get to an amendment to that, the paneling board thing. Does anybody want to second that?
Second, we got to keep the ball rolling.
Yeah, okay, so we got a motion there with a second, and then I'm just going to offer an amendment to the motion to add the following conditions approved by Planning Board on August 6, 2024, that the community facilities map on page 18 and any associated text be updated with any facilities that have been completed to date, and that the creative campus boundary in the Village Center diagram on page 15 include the mixed-use area on the east side of Broadway. Lauren, do you, I'll offer that as a friendly amendment. Do you accept that?
I very much appreciate that friendly amendment.
Okay, and the second one as well. Great.
A second.
Okay, did you want to speak to your motion, Lauren?
Sure. I really appreciate the thoughtful work that staff put into this. I think part of why we're not having a long discussion is that this all seems very well reasoned and thought through. I also appreciated the thoughtful input from Planning Board.
Thanks. Matt, do you have anything else? Okay, great. I'll just call on myself before we vote, and just really appreciate the staff's work on this. Very excited about this creative campus. Big thanks to BMOCA Director Davi Dodone and the property owner Andrew Godimi for working through this process with the city. As a resident of North Boulder myself, which does have a lot of soul, I'm very excited to see the promise of the North Boulder Arts District being realized, and this will be a phenomenal anchor along with the new North Boulder Library branch that was just finished across the street. So, excited for these changes. Any other final thoughts before a vote? All right, can I do a show of hands on this, or do we need a roll call?
I would prefer a roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll start the roll call related to the items for the North Boulder Subcommuniti Plan amendments with Councilmember Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Mayor Bronkert.
Yes.
Councilmember Folkert.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Shuhard.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wallen.
Yes.
The items related to the North Boulder Subcommuniti Plan amendments are hereby approved unanimously.
Great. Thanks again so much for all your work on this. Really appreciate it. That brings us to the end of our agenda. And does anybody have any final thoughts before our gavel is closed? Oh, Tara?
I just wanted to give a shout-out to Kurt. Did he leave? Oh, good, Kurt. Mayor Protim, Nicole Spear, and I got an opportunity to see the modular home factory. It is almost done. It was incredibly exciting and also quiet. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, it was a great time. Yeah, anything to add, Nicole?
I would love to add that I believe the date for the ribbon cutting that we should be invited to is October 23rd, so if you want to mark it on your calendar, it was really cool to see, see it in progress, and just amazing the amount of work that has been done. So, thank you.
Right on. Okay, well, with that, I'll go ahead...